Yeah, that's a problem.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, it's.
Maybe it's the.
Okay.
He can hear me.
Oh, I don't know.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll charge you a full.
I didn't realize you could pass during the meeting.
Yeah.
You got that?
Yes.
Okay, and there was seven dogs and fourteen cats sold or given away. And if anybody needs any dogs or cats, I would urge you to contact Mrs. Get a hold of her. Okay. AJ's in a hurry. He's got things to do today. So we're gonna turn, stop and turn it over to him. I know it's not quite according.
I think every time, I think every time I show up, I'm in a hurry.
I know you are, but that's like.
Um, I appreciate it. I wanted to give you a couple of updates. First of all, with the building.
Yes.
Um, we were a couple of months behind because of, and gentlemen know as far as the groundwork out there and some things. Uh, we did make some adjustments as far as the, uh, project manager for Testus and we have done that. That seems to, things have been, for the most part, I mean, you're always gonna have something, but it seems to have been smoothed out, uh, quite a bit. Um, right now, we're looking at the state of, uh, early March, somewhere in there. And, uh, this, we'll go from there. Now, as far as the money side of things, right now, we still have money to finish everything. Unfortunately, the money that I planned on taking that was extra from, uh, Senator Manchin's funds that he had given us, I was gonna put on the existing building to help with some projects that we needed to do there. I don't know how much, I mean, I don't think I'm gonna have enough to do those. We're gonna have to figure out something else.
Give them a minimum for the roof on.
Uh, roof right now, minimum, and like, so we had through height, through height, through them, because we were gonna do it as an add-on. Minimum, they'll put it back to where it is, it's about two hundred thousand.
I looked at somebody else's doing it yesterday morning and it.
If that's, that's my main concern right now. And, and I won't get into why, but that is, that there are safety concerns there. Yeah, if, when we fix that, we're gonna, I, the windows need to be updated. Why would you do that? There's single pane windows where there was a lot of air in and out of the facility. Um, so, uh, that would be my first, first thing would be to get that around the roof. We could maybe tweak out a little bit more on that, but again, and I was talking to Dutch off, you know, offline and maybe look at some of the ones like the ones we did the roof here and get some other bids and, uh, see what we can come up with. Not doing it through this project, doing it separately.
Okay.
Um, so, I'm hoping it looks a little bigger than what it does, or I mean, actually is. To me, it looks a lot smaller, but I know when you're building these things, until you get it up a frame.
Well, that garage is gonna add a lot to the.
Yeah, to, yeah, the, the garage itself.
I thought it would look bigger.
Uh, it's what I, I mean, from the drawings that the architect gave us, it was supposed to fit X amount. And I don't, I don't see it at this point. It'll still be a useful space.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll just have to wait and see, and we'll go from there, but, um, do you guys, uh, gentlemen, have any questions or anybody else about building at this point?
I don't.
Okay. Uh, we have had some problems, as you know, I think, uh, out there with, uh, there was a sewer line that went through, and I'm just telling this because I know it was on social media, so, uh, there was a sewer line that went through the property that P, uh, the PSD did not know was there, apparently. It was old, I don't know if it was terracotta, like old concrete type thing that went through. And I think that might have been causing some of our water issues on the property itself, but, uh, they did, the contractor did not hit it. I think it was more from just the vibrations and stuff, it kind of collapsed. Next thing you know, we have sewage issues out there, pretty major. Uh, this was while I was off. They bypassed from one man hole to the one down below. Uh, apparently, when they did that, it was taking care of the problem temporarily, but, uh, the pump, it was a six-inch pump, you know, hose and all that. It, uh, lost prime. When it got prime again, it kind of kicked the hose out and it was kind of going all over the property. But our, uh, you know, the neighbors adjoining, you know, had put some things up that were, and I would say incorrect. It wasn't on the property or anything, but we immediately, within fifteen minutes, had, I, you know, even we'd been off, you know, with surgery. Made sure that Dutch had called me out to make sure to get the belt out there, and I think it's fifteen, twenty minutes there out there, take care of the problem. Cleaned everything up, I'd taken care of. Uh, in the meantime, while we were at it, I talked to New Creek, um, as far as sewage and water, because there's two different issues out there. Had them, uh, the sewage line that busted, we got that all replaced. Cause I told him, I said, well, this is a four million dollar project, give or take. I'm not gonna have a line that's gonna bust on me six months later under a brand-new parking lot. So I did get them to go ahead and replace that now, so we won't have to worry about that. Same with the water line that goes down the south side. Uh, but there were the, as soon as you unearthed it, the pressure blew it. And so we, they, they fixed it, but it's that line going all the way up through to the trailers. Um, is gonna be up to the parking lot too, and so I've asked them to go ahead and they, they started that process as far as pick, uh, replacing all that as well. So, uh, I think hopefully we've, uh, gotten through the worst of our problems out there and, uh, we'll, we'll, I will be happy when it's over, I'll just say that. Uh, but we're, it, it, it will be good.
Yeah.
Um, we'll be good. The only other thing I have is in front of you, I gave you a packet. Uh, of course, with Senate Bill twelve, a couple of years ago, anything that the health, the Board of Health, uh, passes as far as fees, regulations, ordinances, we have to present to you, uh, once it has gone through that. Um, really not a whole lot of changes. We actually, the copies for, uh, copies for, uh, records are like, if you made, uh, copies of anything, we just look matched them to what, uh, the courthouse has. Um, some of the things with the family planning and there, as far as the clinical surface, services. Um, to make it easier, because the prices change all the time with insurances and stuff. We just put, for anything to build insurance, we just put up the maximum allowable to make it easier. That, you know, that way we don't have to keep coming back every six months a year to do that. Um, the other thing that we did, uh, on the environmental, there was two things. Um, one, uh, one of the things through our, uh, code is we're required to have managers have specific training. It's something, um, cost-effective wise for us to try to do, we don't, we just don't have the staff. Uh, we already have a contract with a company, uh, State Food Safety that does our, a lot of our, we still do food handlers onsite as far as in person. But we do have the option that they can do that online, uh, for a fee to the company. And, uh, we went ahead, we were going to do that with the food managers training. It does cost a little bit more, but it is good for five years. So by the time you break it down, it's not that bad of a cost. Um, but it is something required by the FDA code and, uh, you know, as far as state West Virginia, we follow, you know, the FDA code. So we added that in. The other thing we did, and I've even talked with Lauren and a couple of others about it, uh, some other counties. The thing that we get inundated with now too is, uh, we're looking up records, you know, environmental records, different things like that. So we'll put a fee in place for that as far as twenty-five dollar fees to go through and do that, because it's not, it's not as simple as what you would think. Oh, we just look up the name. The way, the way the records are, it's not in the name of the person who owns the property, or even by legal tax, it's by the original person who owned, put the system in or dwelling, so it takes time to do that. And a lot of it comes down to, uh, real estate type things. Um, so, uh, we put that in place. I know Hampshire has it in place. They've had it for a while. Uh, some others are going that way. I think Harley's getting ready to go that way as well. Um, thank you, Dalberg, and some of the others, they have something like that too. Uh, but, uh, we did do that. Like I said, I did talk, Rogers there when we talked about it, and the board meeting before, like I said, I did check. Uh, I don't think it's unreasonable. That's really about the only other thing we've put in. The, I mean, the rest of the fees have pretty much stayed the same. Um, so, the board passed it. We put it out for a thirty-day notice, had zero comments. Uh, it was posted in the newspaper under Class Two Legal Ad, uh, two consecutive weeks. It was, it's been on our website. Uh, and, and again, we had, we had zero comments about it, so, uh, I presented to you to ask you to go ahead and approve it. We'd like to go ahead and start at September first. And, uh, go ahead and report it.
I'm just curious, sir, on the last page you got, about the county comments, did you get any? No, no comments.
That, that's what I'm saying. We had no comments on it. It was posted, uh, in the newspaper. It was posted on our, on the website. No comments.
You can, does anybody have any questions? Yeah. Did you make the motion we approved, uh, since the change in base of, uh, second and. I agree.
Thank you. Then, well, now I would just ask what you, uh, do what you gotta do on your end, and then that way we can start at September first. And just send me a copy so I have it posted. And.
Hey.
Unless you have anything else to be.
Thank you for the update on the, uh, on the health department out there.
Oh, uh, the other thing, I'll let you know, just sidetrack, we've been going out, um, of course, we're in the middle of immunization season and all that with schools. We're getting ready to do, uh, flu stuff, uh, we are planning here soon. I know we haven't had mobile unit out much just because of all the chaos out at our place, because we actually ended up the sheriffs. We are gonna roll something out, go up to the fairgrounds here soon, uh, do some flu vaccinations up there, do some stuff offsite. We've been going, um, matter of fact, I think they're going tonight to the middle school to do some vaccinations, that they're back to school. Um, so the, uh, staff's been getting out. We've been doing a lot more community health promotion out and about. We're supposed to up to Tommy State College, do something, uh, I believe next, uh, next week, is it the eighteenth? Yeah. And, uh, so we've, we've been doing a lot, you know, give it more of that as well, so. Um, other than that, like I said, if I can get through this, uh, chaos out there, we'll be going pretty good, so.
I think it's about over forty. The next twenty, next twenty years.
Uh, you have high hopes for me being around. Oh. No, I got three, right?
Jesus.
But.
I had to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know. No, but, um, yeah, no, I'll, I'll probably be around for a while. Um, but anyway, if you have any other questions for me at this time.
No, I don't myself, anybody. I gotta run the round. All right, but thank you, AJ. I appreciate you coming. Thanks, AJ. Uh, the next is the West Virginia Division Jail Bill. Hey, Joel, uh, I've read over this, some of it. There's about four or five arresting agencies. It's not in Mineral County. Do, do you check on them and make sure they're legitimate bills?
That's good. He, he can call and confirm the ones that we are paying to bill for are, or is in fact from this county.
Okay, so there is, they're good.
In review.
Okay, good enough. Thank you, thank you. Okay, there, oh, here, I didn't give that. Let me get back to that. Oh, the reason your jail bill for the month of July was thirty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars thirty-four cents. So, and, and I'll be honest with you, I don't think we ought to be paying that myself, but according to some of the other counties, that is extremely low. Randolph County, theirs run over a hundred thousand dollars a month. And I talked to the gentleman from Berthby County. He said his, they, they budget three point five million dollars a year. Can you imagine that? Rick, can you help yourself? Okay, I know, I know I'm putting pressure on you, Rick. I don't mean to. Okay.
What, what do you wanna do? You wanna pay more?
No, I, I tell you what I would like to see, in all honesty, and I know, I know some of the municipalities can't afford it. I understand that. I get that. Some of the counties can't either. But I'd like to see their residence agency pay for their bills or the state take it over, what is what should be done. We're paying bills for the state. The county is paying state bills. It's not right. The state police arrested some of these people. I mean, that's just my thoughts. You know, but I, I know municipalities, a lot of can't afford it either. I know that. I, I get that. But anyway, enough of that. Okay, we'll move along with John Del Signor, put a letter in to, to, uh, serve on the Farmland Protection Board. So, uh, and also Derek Spencer put a, a, a letter in to serve on the Farmland Protection Board, so. We'll have to look at him a little bit. David Webb, but wants to be reappointed to the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission for an additional term. Don't forget these two that I. And, yeah, I, I was, I was just thinking of them when you said that, and I don't have them right here. Oh, here it is. I got my touch. And also, uh, Dutch, he's, I'm gonna read this to you. He said, it's been an honor to serve on the Public Service District for the past few months, however. Several members of the community have expressed interest in serving in the role. As a current county commissioner, I believe it is important to provide citizens the opportunity to contribute in this capacity. According, accordingly, I hereby submit my resignation from the PSD, Fountain PSD Board, effective upon the appointment of a successor. This will soon ensure a smooth transaction, uninterrupted service to the district. And, and the, uh, sign with Dutch. And, and also, we do have somebody, uh, to serve on that board. Uh, Keith Stags has, uh, wrote a letter of interest to serve to be appointed, the Fountain Public Service District. Now, I have a question. Is Burnington, how, slash Burnton Fountain?
Well, he just put Fountain, slash Burnton, but it's.
It's so, yeah, okay, I know they take care of it. I knew that. Okay, I didn't know if they was trying to change that or not. Okay. So, Keith Stags has put in interest in serving on that board also. Okay, uh, moving along, uh, swipe and celebrate, sweepstakes. First United Bank. We invite you to celebrate with us during the Customer Appreciation Day. This event will be held on the twenty-fifth of each month from July to December the twenty-fifth. So, uh, visit our local First United Bank. Uh, and they're gonna enjoy giveaways, refreshments, share our favorite memories and experience with us, or learn more about our products and service. And, uh, I'm just gonna add this, uh, First United is a very good bank in our community. They got some money in deposit in, in their savings for, for, had to do that. All right, we're gonna move along here a little bit, because we got a lot to do today. Uh, US Cellar is emerging with T-Mobile. So we got a letter there on that. And it says, there's three things there. What does this mean for your business? Uh, it simply says, no action needs to be taken or needed on your part, rather, your current business plan and discussion remains unchanged. Uh, and so forth and so on. So, if, if anybody needs a copy of this to read it, they're more than welcome to get US Cellar T-Mobile for Business, uh, slip there once.
And that's because we have T-Mobile, that's, we have U.S. Cellar, the dispatch center and all the work.
Okay, now, we got a letter here, uh, pertaining to, uh, Great Oak Valley. Regarding the sanitary sewer project in Greater Oak Valley development, the contractor has made good progress to the extent and that major components of the project appears to be, have been completed. There are two areas of concern. Number one, the large, heavy truck equipment and heavy trucks have virtually destroyed a significant portion of the development's road network. Homeowners are rightfully concerned and expect roads to be fully restored. So, has anybody talked to them about that? You know of?
Just, I just got that letter yesterday and had to put all that. I don't even know who sent it. There's no, there was no.
There's no, there, no ad, no name.
No, it's probably for New Creek though.
Who's the, R K N K, I assume is the.
R K N K, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Um, yeah. I mean, I can reach out. Uh, what, what do you guys wanna do with it? I mean, I don't know what PSD's plans are for road repairs. I'm sure R K N K has initial videos of road conditions.
Yeah, and it, just, I'll finish reading it here, Luke, and can you, no, it's not necessarily a company right now. There have been virtually, uh, child, they know written communications provided to the homeowners regarding at a minimum project scope and schedule. Which homes will have access to the service, hookup costs, billing costs, et cetera? It is hoped that the county commission can get involved and support the residents of Greater Oak Valley. If the commissioners choose to visit the development to see firsthand in the road damage, it is important that the entire road system be viewed. Thank you. Uh, I, what, I don't know what we can do other than the, the people that's running the roads need to pay for it, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you can prove that, but, and I don't even know what's in the contract. I know nothing.
Yeah, I don't know what's in that contract either. What he described of the project was, I mean, as far as the roads go.
Yeah, because in theory, I mean, the project contract should have outlawed, if any road, any damages caused by the project would be returned to a reasonable condition.
Will? Maybe you can get ahold of Valerie. My sister.
I think that's why he's looking at you.
I thought of that when I was reading that.
That or one of the board members up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can definitely call.
Yeah, maybe, that'd be a good place to start.
Yeah.
And then we'd have to contact the board and see. When is their meetings? Do you know?
It just had one on Tuesday at noon.
Tuesday at noon, it's the second Tuesday tomorrow. Yes.
I will try to get you to.
Yeah, find out, let us know. We might have to talk to them. Okay. Uh, Western Department of Health, uh, EMS Equipment Fund.
Um, it apparently is.
Never, don't remember Shannon.
Well, that's nice.
So, well, I just read it. So we have to equally distribute it amongst the agencies of all the nine-one-one responding agencies in the county. Um, and we have to track what they buy, so we can submit the receipts to OEMS. Um, this is the first I've seen it, but, um, uh, I mean, I guess it's pretty simple. It already tells what we have to do. We have to split it amongst them. Um, and then just we have to track what they buy, so we can submit it.
How, how are we gonna do that? Because are we responsible for what is bought?
What do you mean?
Well, if they would spend it, and I don't think any of them would, I don't mean it that way, but if something was bought that wasn't legit, who's gonna be held responsible for that?
I think what we should do, and I, I would, I need to look at it again, but, um, it has to be transporting agencies, by the way, so it can't be like Chase Farm. Um, I did just see that. Didn't they try to put that in there? Um, but. Yeah, we, yeah, we definitely, um, but what, the, what I'm thinking initially is we probably just, they can make a purchase, submit the receipt, and we cut them a check for their share.
Yes.
Because if we send it to them and then try and get receipts back to submit to OEMS, that'll be a nightmare.
So we have nine transporting?
Yes. Well, I, I need to look into it a little bit more.
Valley's all under that?
Valley does respond to nine-one-one. So I need, it says primary transport units know, but anyone in response nine-one, and they are second due, county bond. Um, yeah, so.
I also want that the auditor, we use the current EMS fund, or do we have to do another?
Oh, okay.
To do another fund.
Do you wanna reach out to them about that, and then I can, I'll look at this a little bit more and make sure I understand everything correctly, but it does look to be relatively cut and dry, just as long as they can keep documentation.
Sure, we'll hold that over to the next meeting and then you guys. Yeah, I'm, I think that's what I was.
It says here under the eligibility, uh, that's provide nine-one-one response with or without transport capabilities.
It's in a different percentage for transport.
Oh, you're right, it does, with any.
Yeah, there's a percentage goes to transport, or ninety-five goes to transport, five goes to non-transport.
And Valley would. And Valley would not be eligible cuz they are licensed as a medical transport agency. Well, if they are not on the county's nine one one response system.
There's, we'll see when we get time.
Okay, so, but if you go down Dutch on the distribution, it will receive the ninety five percent share, five percent. Can be distributed equally among all agencies licensed.
Yeah.
That provide nine one one without transport.
Okay.
Uh, so the Chase Card gets five percent, and we split the other ninety five amongst everybody else.
That's why I just came, so I threw it under response, cuz it was just came. Okay.
Well, I'll have to look. I don't think Patterson Creek has a response license, but at one point they did. So I'll have to look. Cuz they, I'm not sure that their trucks are.
I think they are either with.
As long as they're, but I can't remember. So.
Yeah. Good. All right.
All our thoughts and our thoughts sharing it too. Yeah, well, and we still gotta invoice them to even get the money. So I can definitely get the invoice paid in pair of those, so we can get it back. Rick, did you know about that?
Okay.
If it's any reference to the bill, not already figured it.
No. I just thought it was five million split amongst the state.
Man, that's surprising. They split it up evenly amongst all accounts.
Yeah, I bet the big counties are upset about.
I bet they are too.
We we passed a couple, three bills actually, two years ago. They were fire related. So don't think this falls under that.
Would this have been part of the salary enhancement?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that.
For OEMS, I mean, I'm sure they appreciate doing that, but I know they don't have the staffing to manage this at the. Level it requires. Cuz when you have a question, you actually have to call um Joey Joseph um and. Talk to the director himself, because they don't have anyone who does it. So yes, they can handle it. So. Okay, I can have stuff ready for us.
All right. Middleland. Level eleven regarding them.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
This was the letter, response letter regarding the route. From the last week.
I I.
That was sad, right?
Yes, it was already sad.
I mean, yeah. Well. Some people got a little upset that we picked a route, but. My thinking on this was that. Before they even filed PSE, we had to, they were going, they have to pick a route. And. If it has to go through, if we're forced to to take it. At least maybe we could have a voice in where it went, and it would be least invasive to our citizens, and that's why we picked a southern route. Um, some felt that it was a sign of surrendering, and it's not at all. We are. Addively against this transmission line. As a county. Or as county commissioners, I'm I'm looking for the others too. All three others are against this transmission line and. We are willing and prepared to uh do what we can to to stop it, so.
Alongside citizens.
Yeah, along with the citizens, uh with the group of citizens, so. Um, tried to reach out to Allegheny Garrett County Commissioners to see if they can get on board, cuz we already have Monongalia, Preston. Uh Mineral Hampshire and Jefferson, which are the five counties of West Virginia that'll be affected by this line. But the other two would be Allegheny and Garrett in Maryland. Uh. They haven't been receptive, but uh. I just, that's just started trying, trying to get in touch with them, so. That's all there is on that, that I have. All right. So moving right along here, we got board in appointments.
Do we have uh here a motion for any farm land protection? Or not?
Make a motion, Nate. That's John Del Sigmar and Derek Spencer, that's. On the board. You have to file any kind of second that also.
Um, under that agenda item, I would request an executive session to discuss a parks and recreation. Board can pray issue.
Do you need that now?
Um, we can wait till Terry gets here, or I think.
Yeah, let's wait to, let's wait to see if it's okay, cuz he's here. Nothing's pertaining to. Well, Jeff, there are a couple in here, Jeff, and, but they're on it now, the ones.
Yeah, so Jerry will be here around nine thirty, so I think it'll.
Okay, and also, how about the Middletown County Sheriff's uh Civil Service Commission? I move we point Dave Webb to that.
So. All three, but then also.
Okay, and then we have one. Uh, I move we accept resignation of Dutch Stags from the uh public Fountain Public Service District.
And making first emotion, motion on that. We accept that resignation.
And I'll second to you.
She couldn't get that out. They don't know.
Sorry, uh it gets worse if you get over. Uh. Steve, okay, how about the appointment of of.
An under motion that we accept Keith Staggs. I'm officially recusing myself from that.
Is she related to you?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and I'll second that. That is my brother.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. At least he's one known. That's a good thing. Um, so I.
And I have discussed this with the B S D before.
Okay. Well, I brought it.
Then I can get that.
Well, for for complete transparency, there were several people that talked to me about it. And I told them for several months, give me, give me a letter or get a letter to the clerk that they wanted to be on the board. And so far, he's the only one that. They'll send him to the letter, so David Webb.
Oh, David Webb.
Oh, yeah, they got you.
Yeah, you did that.
You seconded.
I did, yeah.
You're you're about two minutes older. Tell me, Jason, it's not good, Jason. All right, moving right along. Uh, I'm trying to see here where we're at, as I got my paper here. Huh?
House.
Yeah, courthouse and annex improvement project.
So it is actually coming along pretty well now. We are getting very close to the finish line. Um. I have expressed uh deep concerns about the lack of punch list completion. Um, they have assured me that once they finish the courthouse, they are going to go back through and make sure the punch list is taking care of every building. While we are getting the punch list ready for the courthouse, they're gonna go back and fix everything that needs to be fixed in the law enforcement center and in the courthouse annex. Um. The jury room is built, has doors, is usable and functioning again. Got the floor in yesterday.
Get the floors fixed everything.
That was prosecutor's office.
Did they get that fixed yet?
Yeah, they, yeah. Uh John Pressman came and fixed that. He just put new lights and ran MC cable for us. Um, so. The guys have to do a little bit of plaster repair in the jury room, and then it'll be painted. The new waiting room is there. Um. They've made a lot of progress the last couple of weeks, if you guys have a lockdown. Um, one of the biggest delays is going to be doors um in getting people moved in, like probation. Um. So we have frames, but we do not have doors for like where Krista presently is, where the conference room will be upstairs, and the two downstairs where probation will be. Uh, so we're waiting on those and going to be waiting for a while. You all know the Judge Pancake moved into his suite. Um. I think everything's okay there. He wants an additional door. Maintenance will take care of that at some point. Uh, they were pouring concrete this morning. Um. There was one place that, well, they talked to Dutch yesterday about a piece um. That connects where all the old probation was to the new sidewalk. They were gonna do it. And then yesterday, when I got here, they had mentioned one more place. Um, and. Because if not, the ramps face each other across the street, so you can go straight across, and we don't have any van parking. So they did add one more. Additional piece that goes over to the blacktop, so we can put two van spots in there. Um. It was gonna be less than two thousand dollars, but they, the truck was coming first thing this morning, and they just, I guess or no, so. Hope that was okay. Um, but it needed ramps because we needed, we we don't have a van spot down there right now, and Doug was just talking about people coming to pay their taxes, like. If you're trying to get a wheelchair out of a car in those cities of ours, it's almost impossible. Um, so that way people can get straight out of the van and go up onto the sidewalk and not have to go on the street. Um. Everything's going pretty well. Um, there's some, a lot of last minute work that's gotta be done around, like the acoustic paneling, um, the acoustic walls in the courtroom and the uh. Family courtroom. They're gonna do that as weekend work, and they're supposed to give me a pretty good notice when they do it. Um. The blue building, Joe did come do the inspection. I've not heard back from him, but I did follow up last week, and he said. He sent everything away. Um. And he was waiting to hear back, but the only place he expected there to be asbestos was the window glazing. Um, so that's a good thing. Um, the inspection is gonna be around four hundred dollars, and then when we hear back about the windows, we'll figure out what we need to do about that. Um. I did follow up with Jeremy. That ten thousand eight hundred dollars he quoted us does include. Doing that lot in the the road, the road crush and run or whatever it is. Um, so. If you guys are. Comfortable with that, I don't, I feel like that's a pretty. Reasonable estimate. Um, and that way, as soon as that can be torn down. Other than getting it striped, which is what we're gonna have to figure out, cuz if that lot's striped, we can easily fit fifty cars there. Um, so we've just got up, we're just gonna get it striped after he. Does it now? Are you guys okay with moving forward with that then too?
Yeah, yeah.
The tear down, except for did for the tearing down the house. We have a motion on that, cuz that's.
How much was that biggest?
Ten thousand eight hundred dollars. It was right in that hall car.
Well, we already officially accepted that.
No, last meeting, you guys told me you wanted the asbestos inspection before we operated.
Is anything on the action? Is anything on your asbestos?
Just those windows flaysings, which that's not. That's not a big deal. In other places where we've had that, we pulled the windows.
Yeah, all you do is pull winded out.
Yeah.
That'll, it makes sure I heard you right. That also includes the crushing run on the.
Yes, yeah, sure.
I make commotion. Care down the blue building and having the driveway done, parking lot done.
Excellent. One of the issues, rest.
Fourteen reach first, ten thousand eight hundred.
Eight hundred, no, I just pulled it here.
I'll second that. I approve that also. That's not bad, too bad for anything.
They all phone on that. They called me yesterday about the sidewalk, the, talking about the sidewalk, the blue house and. And they was playing to me over the phone, and it was just a little piece with less than a thousand dollars to take care of it, and. Uh, they said it would look really, and Judge, I was just going by memory, whatever, we're looking at it, and I thought that was in the right place. Um, but I told him, I didn't see an issue with it, just go ahead and do it and then get it taken care of.
And I came in right after you talked to him, and it absolutely needed done. I'm glad they called because it is.
Yeah.
And that's what they had the trucks coming this morning, so it would have been silly not to do that.
You got anything else on the project? On the courthouse?
Um, Eileen, do you have anything on the dedication?
Well, I was gonna announce it. I got it. Uh. There's gonna be a. It says self-guided tour will be offered to those wishing to. To see the update. So yeah, just saying that if you get lost, don't blame us.
Right, self-guided.
Self-guided. No, there'll be people there to help a little bit direct in the right direction, but on September nineteenth at twelve noon, we're gonna have a dedication to the building. Uh, I haven't heard, I know the governor's rep is coming if nothing happens, but I don't, have you heard anything from the governor?
I sent his, uh, we have to do a meeting request letter with all the invitees.
Yeah.
Uh, and I sent that, but I haven't heard anything back from him.
Yeah, I know, I've been curious to come, but I don't know if he will. Control his schedule. So September nineteenth at twelve noon, you don't have nothing to, uh, to do, come through and. Look at your tax authority report, right?
Uh, I do have.
Nice.
Another thing, I'm sorry. So I talked to Hotchkiss yesterday. And he, uh, Arthur Angus, the Director of Security for the Supreme Court, came in at our annual audit. Um, and the only concern he has, um, which is a good thing, means we've addressed all. All the security concerns, um, which I hope so. They've given us a lot of money over the past several years. Um, is. In the, we'll call it the magistrate lobby, their waiting room. That door, we have an emergency exit only sign on it. But people can still exit. We had an alarm on it, but it fell off. It was like a cheap Amazon twenty dollar alarm. That was my fix, so you don't have to spend a bunch of money. Uh, but it didn't last. He said we need to do something so people can't exit there. Um. The problem is that has to be an emergency exit, so it's very expensive. Um, to address that. Um, I have asked Advantage to provide us a quote because it has to be a delayed egress panic. Uh, so. Because when the fire alarm is off, you have to be able to get out, but we can walk in until then.
Have you checked a leaving?
I asked, they were just here yesterday, and they're gonna get a price on it, but I do expect it to probably be two or three thousand dollars for that. Panic, and I was trying to look at some other options too. Um. But that's, that's probably what we're gonna have to do. Um. Well, I guess the only other thing we could do is we could put. The fire alarm panels over there. I guess technically we could put a mag lock on that door that's tied to the fire alarm system. That would release. I can look at that as well.
Okay.
That would be a little cheaper than the lady dressing, but.
You got anything on the updated around?
Family court judges have had, still been having issues with their. Their interest.
Um.
Uh, I did find an extra. Closer mechanism than put it on that did help. Help is a problem currently, but Jeremiah has been really good at each, taking his time, sending his guys there to help work on that, and. He said that that really needs to have a new door.
Okay.
The problem they were having is that the judges would leave the door to exit the building. Without turning around and physically watching to make sure that the door closes, sometimes it would stay open. So it got the ducts here. But the new mechanism up to this point has been working okay. But he he said that it really needs to have a new door.
I can have coverling glass quoted, but I can tell you exactly what it's gonna cost. It'll be the same as can directions. What was that?
Thousand.
Three?
Thousand dollars.
Two.
Three.
Yeah, three.
I understand why it needs to be a new door. There's a frame.
Apparently the bottom, the bottom of the current doors. There's an issue somehow, how to let it. Such as within.
Well. Jeremiah, I've had, I've had this discussion, but there's no winning. The door worked fine for the project. And that's, I know it keeps going over and fixing the closer and stuff, but it worked fine before the renovation, but. It is an old door, so there's no, it's not like it's one they put in. It's probably been put in there since, my guess is, when the building was remodeled.
Yeah, that's what I kind of.
And I did, in their defense, I did check that at the entry point last week, and. Seven out of eight times, it did not shut. If you were to just walk out the door and just keep walking, turn around and look, it's that far over.
Oh, no, I believe you. I know that it's happening, but I'm saying it did close before construction. They're hard on stuff, especially our old stuff that's fragile.
Well, give a quote on the door. Well, it's three thousand dollars is what's gonna be. What do you guys wanna do?
I mean, it's gotta be fixed.
For safety. Well, Judge Rock actually had a gentleman enter the door, not knowing.
Yeah, that's not good. That's not good in our world today.
That we, uh, fix the door for three thousand.
Judge replaced the door.
Yeah, I'll second it. It's just gotta be done.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there cameras on the back door that rise?
Yeah, but it goes right into the judge's office. It would be way too late if I don't get it all.
Okay, update on the court. You don't have nothing else on that?
Um, I don't have anything on that. Yeah, cuz I, we've kinda.
And we've already had an update from the CDVG, the Health Department Facility. Uh, update on the opioid funding.
Oh, Anna Story was requesting her next court repayment um for Dr. Curber's buydown. Uh, they've submitted invoices and. Um. Retorts of what she's done. I'll make a motion. We approved that next court repayment. And that's, that was. Well, what we gave them first time, thirty, so it's be sixty. Or thirty.
Yeah.
She gotta figure like twenty four thousand, the odd number, but just a thirty.
Yeah, it's a thirty.
Was there a set number on that?
Uh, I don't have anything else, uh, other than, do you need more information about getting checks out, people or? Okay. I don't know, we, we need to get together on that.
They'll change, they'll, they'll bring an update on, uh, twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Officially all the.
Yeah, so.
But it'll give them a month to have to, to report.
Update on this, uh, fire department financial view.
Hey, I'm at a loss what to do with this, I. I don't know.
Get a response from that follow?
I did get some responses, um, but I got about as many as I expected, um, the majority of people were not in progress, um. Uh, and the people I expect, I'd have to go back through and look, I did not charge them, um, but. But the people who emailed me back were using an accounting firm, but it's the ones I expected to be using them and then there's, though it was less than half that I received responses from. Uh, Mike Ryan did call me, I guess he was doing like three of the reviews and he was done one of them, um. And he asked me what to do and I said, go ahead and send it to us, cause my understanding is there will be a review mechanism of some kind and that will go ahead and meet that, that company's. Um. Their, their need for a review, he was charging three thousand is what he was charging for the reviews, which I think is in mind. For the work, um, but I, I don't know what to do with it either, I. It's not like we can set a single accountant that would be willing to. Do it for the cost, cause I, I truly believe three thousand dollars is reasonable to ask for fire departments to pay for that, I mean, I think for even for their own internal keepings, but. What do you do when other firms are charging five and seven, like we can't control that, so.
They're gonna bid out for somebody to do the whole county and. Who doesn't know what's been, who does that?
Well, we could, but the problem is, all of the local accountants are serving. Six more, one or the other fire department, so that fire department wouldn't be able to use that one. Cause there's, I know Allegheny Business Systems is being used, I know Mike is being used, I know Hubert Michaels is being used, um.
See, that's part of the reason I wanted, I was asking in the survey is like who they were using so we could see.
What's his firm saying?
I'm, I'm sure it's my son. Hmm, I don't know, is it something tonight at the fireman, uh, meeting we have been discussing tonight? Watch me do it.
Well, and. The requirement is that the person be a CPA. And when I've tried to do license lookups on. At least one person doing some of the reviews, I can't find a license, um. But. That could just be because. It could be ever so different, but that is, one thing is. People look at accountants and say CPA, but CPA is a level of licensure to achieve, not just accountant over door. So.
Okay. This, those stations that I've talked to, uh. The seven four, three of them are all, they're like, yes, giving nobility, and then the one is absolutely not.
Oh, so you've talked to some that are in favor, but they just don't wanna pay for it?
No, they, they'll pay for it, the three that I've talked to, it's like, yeah, we need to do it, it sounds good, but it's just the one that's, it's a.
Well, and like, for example, I talked to Dusty from New Creek, he called me and he's definitely in favor of this, but he also thinks it's.
The cost.
It's too expensive.
Yeah.
Cause it is ten percent of their money, I agree that five or seven thousand dollars is too much, but I just don't know a good way to.
He was one of the problems, he was definitely for it.
Yes.
It's right, but the cost was something, yeah.
I mean, we could try to bid it out, I mean, it's your all's requirements, you. I mean, if. Yeah, I mean, we could try to bid it out and see.
I think we're, do what we can to help save money.
I mean, cause. Just, yeah, I mean, the bid process will be a lot of work though, so it needs to be something like, if you guys do wanna do that.
It'll still be under.
And, and all the fire departments aren't being bored, so they're the ones paying.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, all squads is gonna hit and make it, right?
Right.
But it might save some of them some money. Something that we could, the fire protection, we can keep some money inside to help pay for that, just through accounting line.
We've already sent all the fire protection money out, okay?
A little bit.
Not.
He imagined one, two other ones.
Yeah, and that's supposed to be for, and I've dropped the ball on that, I just, I don't know what to do with it. Cause, sorry, that money is for crisis response, it's for like mental health stuff and I. No one from me, everyone from the insurance, he keeps telling me to schedule a CIA some class to do all these things, but. I'm also one person, those are big goals to accomplish, um, so. Hmm, I don't know what you all wanna do.
Get feedback tonight from the meeting? That might not be a bad idea. It's feedback, I don't have the agenda of the meeting for tonight, I mean, I got the.
And the Fire Fighters Association doesn't send out a agenda, so I don't even pay out.
What time is it tonight? I never got done more.
Six o'clock.
At El Gordon, firefighters and sex and they don't send.
Yeah, yeah, I knew the firefighters, yeah, I, I knew the observer.
Do you have a Gmail basis and just frontier?
Yeah.
Brother.
Uh, I don't know.
Maybe she's, cause her, she uses the same list, like she knows.
Well, I've been getting your others.
Oh, well.
No, I'll get your others, but I'll be dead.
I might have updated in my, uh, commission email, but not in my, in my, uh, email.
If anybody's got anything, it's really not important, send it to Frontier. John, you're right, you know, he's crazy, a hundred of them a day, hundreds.
So you should be getting a Gmail.
Should be getting Gmail, yeah.
I'll check that.
I just proposed that tonight, we could talk about it tonight.
Yeah, I agree with that, that's a good idea.
Have any of the departments, do they need any recommendations?
Not the ones that I've talked to.
Uh, I, I do think that you all reviewing them. Is really good in theory, but I think it's gonna be a lot more in execution than what it seems like, so.
So, I agree.
Cause all of the, trust me, I've, I've said yes to a lot of things in nine years that I thought would be, um, small. Not big job, the next thing you know, it takes. Weeks of my time, so. Yeah, I guess we need to see what they say.
Yeah.
And we could look at. Bidding it or, well, I mean. They could choose to have a review or simply submit all of. All they could choose to have the review or they have to submit, you can make it an or thing, like have a review. Or you must submit bills for all of your expenditures. Like they used to do. But I mean, I think you should get feedback from them, but I mean, you can make it, give them options, so.
Hopefully they all show up.
They, well, it's August and it's out guard.
Of course.
They're not what I meant, Fire Fighters Association unfortunately has, since I've been here, they've never had. A lot of attendance, he handles forty hours.
I'm one of it. And one at Fire Fighters Association, just. Every time they have a meeting, they don't have enough really to have a meeting or, or they end up canceling it before.
Hmm, and unfortunately, the people who come usually aren't the decision makers.
Yeah.
For the department, of course, it seems to be getting a little better now, but. They tried to form a chief's association a couple of times, it'll start and then it, but anyways, we better forget a lot of things and I'm.
Yeah. How tonight is six at El Gordon? Uh. Do you wanna go and?
Yeah, cause I, I mean, I presumed you guys were making a decision on that today.
Commission personnel.
Cody's here, come with me.
Yeah, you did, you guys wanna go down and keep doing your business project? We won't be but a little bit. Well, I know, part of what I wanted to mention, well, while you were pausing and talking, I just keep encouraging people, I use you guys as well. Remind those departments, they need to be on the checkbook, West Virginia checkbook by the end of the calendar year, they wanna keep getting that funding, starting next January. Remind, reminding them that.
That's by twenty twenty-six, right?
Right at the end of the, right, I mean. She's money a time, it's not hard, it doesn't need to be a crisis unless you wait till December thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay.
You remember something?
Yeah, I'll ask you here later, I don't want to, but it's, it's due, I believe. Yes, it's, it's, it's a good thing.
Once the one, the open checkbook, would that be a way for us then to be able to see things and not have to do this here?
The open checkbook will definitely.
And what data they put on it?
Yeah, and how often they update it, they haven't even updated the last school year.
Okay.
That's not, that's not real time, it's very far from it.
Right, and I think with the fire departments, it's gonna be way worse than the people who have. Hundred thousand dollar accountants on staff, so do their uploading, like. Um, Cody's not here yet, I mean, the commission personnel is a separate piece of business, but I just figured we could do it all at once.
Yeah, this is one to she, this, make this, going with the meeting till she gets here, all right, the new hire, we'll, we'll go back to the commission personnel. Uh, new hire, approaching your attorney, you got, you got the papers here in front of you? Any questions?
I did meet her the other day, she seems very nice.
She's like, she's like, she's not here now, right?
Yeah, she started my day, uh, now, you had me wondering about the salaries, but I went ahead and sent this one because. The hourly rate is more than our regular hourly rate because of the position that she's gonna be in, so if I could go ahead and get a motion, you all to approve this employee. But also to improve the hourly rate at the eighteen fifty and then her salary upon completion for seventy thousand.
I will make that motion. I, I said.
And I approve that also. I, I am just curious, this is just noticing this, where did that hourly rate come from?
He just.
Just chose, yeah, I'm like, that's a way low hourly rate.
Fifteen dollars an hour for what she's gonna be doing.
Well, I thought eighteen fifty was way low, even, even though she hasn't passed the bar, like, she's still a trained.
Well, she is, but she hasn't got her.
Right, I just, I feel like that's a, but it doesn't matter, I was just curious where that came from, that semi random number.
Okay. Uh, I'm probably gonna get tired of saying this, Joe, you're up. I'm just teasing you, Joe. Uh.
Well, the first item is his fiscal year and settlement.
Yeah.
Um, so as you can see, it's several pages and then with that, you're approving his commission, comes back out.
Back in. So if we don't approve it. That'll save us some money, yeah. We put that new door in, yeah.
You got like five of them.
Nice.
I don't think it's you they're gonna deal with, if they don't, I'm not allowed. And they don't want to feel.
I met his wife, she's much scarier than him.
All right. Good, I think you answered.
That's how we do rate.
You don't talk to the man next to work for that.
Okay, uh.
You do that, not them.
So you want us to approve his?
Well, you approved the, uh, financial settlement, share settlement, and then authorized approval of his, uh, commission, haven't.
To go to the new doors. I have teased it a little bit, do I hear? All right, do I hear a motion to approve the, the, uh, settlement and give, and give, uh. Do you have any sort of?
Yes.
Missionals. Response, Joe.
The fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, fifteen, yeah.
Set my code.
Set some mood. And, and I'll second that too.
I agree.
Okay, so you get. It's approved, okay?
Yeah.
Rob, make some out. All right, now we'll move on down to approve, uh. Two deputies, uh, promotions, we have two deputies. They will receive, uh, an increase of two thousand dollars apiece. And they have been promoted to sergeant. Effective eight one, and then, well, that's, uh, Nick. Nick will be, uh, eight one, and is this the same with Huskis, this is nine one?
Yeah, this isn't until September first.
This is to September first.
So if I could have two separate motions?
Well, yes, so I hear a motion about Nick Wilson. Moving up.
Make a motion, we approve that promotion.
I second, and I approve that also, and.
That motion there is filling the vacancy from, promotion from the, from sergeant to lieutenant.
Yeah. And also, uh, Jonathan Huskis will be promoted to sergeant effective nine one. And he also will receive a two thousand dollar increase for stepping up. In due response, so.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, Hotchkiss promotion, um.
Then once that promotion there filled the vacancy that we had from, uh, Sergeant Henderson.
Yeah, and I second that.
And I approve that also, yes, so.
Okay, we got, both of them approved, you're drunk.
Yeah.
Uh, new major thirty.
I don't have anything else in your box. Everything else is just verbal.
Yeah, 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 oh, okay, I didn't, okay, I get you, yes, sir.
That's the new, the major thirty-two, that's the all-weather. Uh, possibly to be here today, or this, maybe the first quarter of next week. Now, I spoke with, uh, our rep on that. Offered to provide us training with whoever we so choose for both jobs. And at a extremely discounted rate, uh, the cheapest I found for a free day course was four hundred fifty dollars a person. Is doing it a hundred dollars a person, either at one day a week for eight weeks or two days a week for the next four. And I gave him a list of eleven names.
That's a lot of training.
And he's, he's gonna get every single person we submit to this class ready for the one oh seven.
One oh seven, one oh seven.
And. Uh, you guys want the names that we have selected for that?
Uh, I should, it might not hurt to have him on the record.
Right, currently we have, uh, my department, we have Deputy Boone, Deputy Bradway, I have, uh, Bale Price and one of my reserves that are going to attend the class, Sergeant Huskis. Lieutenant Reel, Captain Winler, uh, civil process, uh, Jeff Conley. Two positions for commission, uh, Commissioner Stags and Commissioner Whipoff and. Uh, moving.
And I can find out about him, that's.
I just wanted to just let you know the number of people and the names that I've given to him for the training. Sorry, did you say reserve?
Kenny.
Charles Kenny.
Okay.
But he's, uh. Will make, i- if, if we so choose to do two days a week, I'm still waiting for the dates, possibly Tuesday, Thursday, not sure yet, but I have a lot of times.
Now, that hundred dollars, that's per person for the whole training, that's.
Per person for the whole training.
That's not too bad. Yeah, that is.
And then your test fee is separate, that's like.
Yeah, that's.
But again, that's, that's two days a week, four weeks, or one day a week, eight weeks. And did you decide fair or was it a training in? Or Humburg, I think it was, which was a hundred fifty dollars a person for free day training.
Well, I told him the state offers free ones, but they're not the closest one, the next one's like down south of Charleston, you'll weigh more into it by traveling. Everybody down there.
Exactly. Okay.
What did you say? What did you say the test fee was?
One twenty pound.
No, I don't, did you, I think it's like one, I thought it was one seventy-five, it could be one twenty-five, I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure, that's, that could change.
Cause I, it's up to all my A's, so. It's like one seventy-five.
Do I hear a motion to approve drone training?
So, we're. Hundred fifty for a hundred person, but there's only, you said eleven, but really technically it's nine people, because I'm paying for myself.
That's, I mean.
And I'll pay for myself as well.
Yes, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, so you think, oh, yeah, uh, I think that's reasonable.
I'll make a motion with approval. So, I approve that, that's the nine hundred. What's that?
So the test separates, it's actually eighteen, not, not double or triple.
Yeah, this, that's just for the training.
And everyone off throughout Hagerstown for that, like he can't administer it, it's an A exam, so everyone's up there. They're having.
I'd say that's made motion to approve training with.
I, it is all true, yeah. Uh. Bailiff trade.
Um, revisiting from earlier this year when we had talked about, um. Rather than going with a percentage increase, um, asking for a thirty five hundred dollar per person increase, which comes out to. Based upon the starting salary of the bailiff is a dollar fifty essential person per hour.
Are they the same pay as the regular employees driving on this? Um, it's, there's not much.
For some reason, they're five hundred dollars more than a regular employee, so.
Now, again, these guys are not certified, so we cannot pass them with. A lot of the great seats in the state that have certified officers working as a bailiff, however. Our bailiffs don't just do board security, they do transports, they work events, uh. Do other things, and, and do other, uh, bailiffs throughout the state's here.
You want, you want how much, thirty five hundred?
Thirty five hundred, whatever be, uh, a yearly increase in that, in that budget would be sixteen thousand three hundred thirty one dollars.
How many do you got now, five?
I have four full time.
Four full time.
Uh, I have. She's all confined, but he helps out with board security, where he's.
Yeah.
Not busy with the whole confided maintenance, so, we have, uh. Uh, Nathan Rice, which is, uh, he is hired as bailiff, but he also does our transportation. And, uh, Jeff Conley, when he's not busy, we, we have a need for additional bail, he does fill in as a bail as well. He's civil process.
See, I think the bailiffs were at a higher rate at some point. I thought the bailiffs used to line up with dispatch, but then dispatch, obviously.
Oh, this, yeah.
That, yeah, dispatch went way up, but like Wade and Ed both make. Almost four thousand dollars more than the base employee salary. But John is at the base salary, I feel like there, I'm not. I'm just saying, I think there was a higher pay grade at some point, and maybe we got lost in that.
Yeah.
Wade's current salary is thirty three thousand four sixty.
Right.
And Ed is thirty three seven six four, rise to their current.
Well, I think, I think at some point, the bailiffs were already a little higher, and I think maybe that kind of got.
We, can we get a copy of their pay now and put this offer to the next?
You've got to reiterate, I think.
Their next, you didn't give us time to go over it. I would like to sit down and work with you for thinking what I would like to do.
This is for something else to discuss. That's where the figure.
Well, that's the thirty five.
The thirty five to another.
Oh, no, we have.
I looked at it, it was your board security, so to pop your page.
Yeah, yeah.
The rest is how she.
No.
This is the. That figure second from the right was something later on in the agenda that was gonna be brought up, that I kind of threw at you earlier. But that gives you your, their current salary, but. But instead of that nine, it would be thirty five.
We have one, we have to take some time to go over this.
Yeah.
I would like sometimes to put that on the, the next agenda, for some seconds, give them some time to read over. Like I've got a lot of photos given and, go somewhere. Okay. Hey, this, this is. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold that over to the next, give us time to look at that, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, do you wanna go into that executive session now?
If you want to.
Okay.
Is there anything else that could be discussed?
No.
Just the commission personnel and the board issue.
Yeah.
Actually, I had one that I like having that the session was getting a location of satellite office.
Um. We'll bring you back to the office, yeah.
Do you have one just?
Calling back, we already just called back one, it shouldn't take, ours shouldn't take long, and the one with Cody shouldn't take long.
No, it won't take long at all. Okay, we'll call you back in a little bit. Okay, if there's no objection, we'll go into executive session.
And I am going to.
Yeah, we've already called, talked about. Uh, we talked about, uh, I forget something, remind me, uh, about, uh, satellite office a little bit, uh.
The, the reason that was eligible for executive sessions, cause it involved contract pricing or a possible location.
And personnel.
Yeah, and personnel.
Have to deal with some personnel issues.
I thought it still needs to be discussed, I don't believe.
Oh, it's gonna be here, yeah, it's gonna be. Uh, okay, let's move on a little bit, we're back up to commission, to personnel here, uh, on the old business. Do I hear a motion? To or for or against or whatever?
Say that again.
With the Parks and Rec, oh, um. Do, remove them, yes, sir, yeah, I'll make a motion that we remove Jeremy Schengler from the Parks and Rec Board.
And I second that.
I approve that also. No. And I'll, should I, I don't know about the P? Yes, and I'll also add in there that he, he has a key to, uh, a shed over at for a rhythm. And the sheriff will get with him, or one of them deputies will get with him to get that key from him. And I think, aren't you writing a letter?
I'm literally going to print it and give it to Huskis right now.
The hawk, we got a job for Huskis.
I'll take theirs, sir.
Alright, sir, thank you very much, alright, uh. Hold on a minute.
It's the share.
Yeah, this approval vehicle purchase, I was looking for something else. Uh, okay, let's go, let's do with the vehicle purchase. Okay.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I need one point five million dollars to dial.
You just wrote a check for that.
Yeah. You guys might have to look there with this.
No, sir, you do what you need to do.
Uh, very passionate. We, we had the vehicle issues and. Was able to meet with a GM rep that came down, took us in. It was one helping us to earn some, uh, bills through GM that I didn't feel were. We should have paid because of the. The year of the vehicle, the mileage on the vehicle, yes, under, well, if you know, according to their. According to their claim, the warranty expired again, and this falls back a few of the issues with having new vehicles and then having it so long before they're actually outfitted and on the road, we've lost so much time, explaining all this to him, so he's going to. One, he showed us a way to, uh, due to the, our vehicles and the nature that are used to not go by the mileage for service, but, uh, use the hours. That's just anyway, and he also presented to us that they have trucks, Silverado crew cab trucks, police active trucks, pursuit rated. They currently have fifteen right now sitting in Michigan. Price of those trucks are considerably less than the purchase of a new, that a thousand dollars. Less than the price of a new Tahoe, these vehicles are a Tahoe, just in front of. Um, what I'm asking is, we have one this year that we are purchasing. Uh, but, well, that's coming out of coal.
That's one that's already ordered, it's supposed to be delivered by the next month.
That was double that call, so what we have, we presented, uh. Free grants to get one, a, uh. Uh, mobile command center. Um. Uh, grant to. Remember what these grants were?
I remember the mobile command center.
Yes, one of the mobile command centers. That was the main important one, anyway, uh, having, being able to get that along with the generator that we have. We relatedly have one truck that is suited for lead vehicles, which is our four three fifty. So what I'm asking is, we have a quote for a new three quarter ton Chevrolet HD. To purchase this truck at fifty two thousand four hundred fifty one dollars. That would give us two three quarter ton trucks, which will allow us to be able to move both of those units. Uh, in case of a emergency situation, i.e. a flood, or whatever it may be. Rather than have to shuttle back and forth with just the one.
It's plenty in your budget.
No.
That's just one day.
And you haven't been awarded the grant yet, it's just been submitted.
Yeah, it's been submitted, but we've been told there's very good possibility of that happening. And that, for that, what I'm asking, if we had one, a lot of the vehicle this year, next year we'll have four. So rather than waiting till next year to purchase four Tahos, I would like to purchase two ton trucks. One three quarter ton truck, and we'll purchase two Tahos next year rather than four. Over the next two years, that's gonna save us twenty three thousand dollars. But we're getting these, but like I said, these two, and they are sitting in Michigan waiting right now. For us to pick up, on approval.
But they'll deliver them.
I don't bet, they give them that, I'll, I'll be there and get them, I have a problem with that.
So there's two half ton trucks.
Two half ton, and they are P D V's, uh, lease package, pursuit rated, half ton trucks.
And one three quarter ton.
One three quarter ton, now, this, this is not, this, this is something that we just got a quote, we would have to tell them, hey, this has been approved. We needed order.
Okay, three quarter ton would be ordered.
The two half tons are sitting there waiting.
How much are the air tons?
The half tons are forty six, nine, eighty nine, six, fifty two. One forty seven.
What's the price on them?
Well, which one?
On the, I was just making sure they line up the same contracts, if not, they have to be bid, but the three quarter ton.
Fifty two. Which, which one, the three quarter?
Yeah.
Three quarter is fifty six, five, twenty nine, so it should be. The, the half.
Half ton's forty six.
Yeah, um, the three quarters fifty six, five, twenty nine. The.
So.
The, oh, yeah, yeah.
I realize you have a, cause your quotes from White's side there.
The three quarter ton is fifty two thousand four hundred fifty one.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The Tahos, the new Tahoe package. It's fifty six thousand five twenty nine apiece, now that's, that's current price. By the time we, if we order those next year, that price could increase.
Six, six what?
Five twenty nine.
And what's the half ton, forty six, seven?
Forty six, nine, eighty nine.
Forty six, nine.
Okay, two, two of the, two of the half tons will be nine three thousand nine hundred seventy.
So you, now, I got a question. Is this, I know I'm stepping up on the thing, I know that, but you wanna request to sell this, only twenty four is it a limit?
What is it?
Yep, Silverado on the next page.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we, that's Christmas, we just heard they had that thing in there.
That's his truck?
Now, he will be getting one of these.
I know he's had trouble with that thing.
Yes, he will be getting one of these new, uh, or Silverado package trucks, I would say.
Since, since that was filed with HIDA funds, and you checked what their end of sale process is.
Can be sold. And the new vehicle coming in would have to be listed under the HIDA. Which we checked at Donnie, it's perfectly fine to, to do that, it would just have to be notated on the HIDA. Form that this vehicle is replaced that one.
Where are we at with the other vehicles getting onto the road?
One's parked down there, the other one is shortly to be there.
But we don't have, in, in that, once the second one gets on the road, we don't have any more to, well, two, we have three that are. I thought we had three or four, I didn't know the number.
Four total.
Okay.
And. Two weeks, two, three weeks ago, we finally got all the stuff that we had ordered to outfit these.
I know, I, I knew it took some time, I knew that.
Especially the one with the K nights.
Oh, that's, oh, we've been sitting on those, that waiting on parts.
Yeah. See, that's what I'm saying, which is one of the reasons why I presented the issue with some of the bills that we've had on our twenty two, twenty three Tahos. That had less than twenty five thousand miles. Honestly. The GM rep told us you can't go based off mile, because our vehicles aren't used like an everyday vehicle. They don't get started to drive to, get shut off, they get driven to, they sit and idle for three or four hours, depending on whatever. So you, based upon their formula, JR Cruiser has twenty to twenty three thousand miles. Based on the year, mileage on that, you have to use the formula they created to help give you an idea of what the actual mileage would be due to the out of time, his vehicle, based upon their formula, would have fifty two thousand, fifty three thousand miles. So, and he is looking into those bills to pretty much get rid of the watch, cause he doesn't feel like we should have to do that.
So you said the three quarter ton from Whiteside is fifty two thousand for a crew cab, twenty five hundred?
Twenty twenty six, Silverado twenty five hundred HD, four wheel drive, crew cab. Fifty two thousand four fifty one, that is gas, six plus sixty five diesel.
Okay, cause the state contract for it is fifty five, seven thirty one, so that's less than that, so our policy says it's less than say contract, it's okay.
And the price of those half tons that I was telling you about, they are new. It almost fifty three thousand, but being that the, whatever agency ordered D fifteen and backed out, this is the price they're giving us. Those half tons will, just will be six thousand eighty nine. And they are ready.
So, um. So we currently have four vehicles, one just got on the road, that are, they're basically brand new. But they're, you're already a year old, because of supply.
Most chance stuff for the, any of those didn't get ordered, that'd be very bad. Water that Trump Chris, I didn't, he's, he's. We did refuse on that truck, and within thirty five thousand miles, we're possibly gonna have to replace the entire wiring parts, and that's right.
A thirty five thousand one?
They have terrible, on that four cylinder turbo model that he has. And it's not a police rated, that is not a, a police package, it, it's not pursuit rated.
No, he don't.
No.
He could one of them.
May have.
May have, that's what I'm saying, yeah, he could.
So.
Possible.
And these are outfitted just like a Tahoe, uh, steel wheels, they have two of those things, that they are.
Alright, so, so we have approximately fifty thousand dollars for three vehicles. The two.
Well, just a rough estimate. Yeah, approximate, yeah, but here's what, here's something you gotta consider. And I know it's now, but correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, you're, you're only gonna be getting two next summer.
Yes, instead of four.
Instead of four, we're gonna get two, so that's when we cut back.
So you're basically buying two now at forty six, nine, eighty nine, rather than next year buying for fifty six plus.
Yeah, and this year, you're gonna be getting rid of two, whi- which we should get decent money out of.
I've already got a buyer for the top, uh, Durango, twenty four thousand dollars. So, it's going to Hancher County, he came and looked at it yesterday, he said he wanted the vehicle. We are checking with the dealership now to get a trade in value, purchase value of this truck, which looks believing to be high thirties, low forties. And I'll point that, again, into that.
Hancher County Sheriff's Office is going to buy the Durango?
Say again?
Who's buying the Durango?
Hancher County.
Sheriff, the, the government, okay, that's what.
Uh.
We can, so.
We can sell, yeah, we don't have to do a public process, another government is buying.
Pissed to another government agency, we can do the right stuff. I even asked about the truck, the little Christmas truck, sir.
How much did you say for Christmas truck on forty, around forty?
We're, we're back in eleven forty, but again, yes. Let's jump ahead just to spite you, or the agenda, the FEMA trailer is setting up there, I already have one general coming look at. Um. But the sale of those two vehicles is going to more than pay for the price of the silverado, the three quarter ton, or more, yeah, we have to. Uh also rather than that thing sitting out there. Just rotting away. Open it up to you real. Of three, of the dead. Buying that money towards these.
So his trailer, him and I had a discussion about this. The code says that the commission can sell surplus property, but it has to be on a public auction over a thousand dollars. I told him we probably need to ask you all because I feel like sealed bid could be considered a public auction, it's probably more of like, uh. As long as it's published, you're accepting bids, it is. In public auction, because it's not as similar to a silent auction, so. Um but I feel, felt like that's my decision, we all.
Well, we're starting on dump deals like the others.
Well, we could, it's whatever you all want to do, but.
I'd say you do that, you're looking at a lot of the process to get rid of that thing.
You mean?
Because if we do, if we, if, if we can, if it can be done by, uh, close bid. We will give them two weeks to get it, we will do it properly.
Are you talking about the, the Durango? No, the, the FEMA trailer.
Oh, FEMA trailer, sorry.
Was that considered a FEMA trailer?
Oh, I have no idea, I know nothing about that.
That's a house trailer, it's sixty feet by fourteen.
But I still think it was a FEMA. It was probably was from FEMA though, because they did used to do.
Very good.
So that's, and there's something else too, because some of that was. Uh. Local governments could get them. And I think FEMA ran into an issue, they got something to do.
The issue with that is if you, if you receive FEMA property, you have to put it within use within their community or municipality for a minimum of two years.
Okay.
Before anything can be done with it, we've had this thing since Gary White.
Okay. It's been here longer than I.
Okay, I just want to make sure we.
It's titled, it's titled to the Mayor of County Sheriff's Office.
Right.
That right time. At least for you guys.
I mean, however you all want, so I just, I told him, it says public auction, but I think that's kind of up for interpretation, I think as long as it's a fair opportunity.
I know the dump deals might take a little longer, but. I think we get a little more money, and then that can have an option, and you would with the, with the sealed bid.
It, it needs a little work, both doors were damaged. During heat transport, we're handling by the Department of Highways. Rear door. Had a leak, and there's a small section there, that door was fully repaired, but outside of that, it's still pretty sound. So.
It doesn't matter to me if you want to do sealed bids, or if you want to do the dump dealers or grand here, that's. You do sealed bids, you just got to get the word out there. You go to a class two legal aid.
No matter what, we have to do a class two legal, yeah, that's the, that's the threshold for sure, is class two legal.
And I think two weeks will be. Sufficient, I already have multiple people asking about it.
Well, you'll have to have two weeks after the class two, the second class two runs. So you have to run the ad for two weeks, and it has to be open.
Except for two years.
After the second.
Yeah.
So we do it.
They say you have the ad run for two weeks, and then you have two weeks where you receive the bid, so you're looking at four weeks.
Yeah, I, it doesn't matter to me how y'all do it, I just told him I think he needed to ask you because it's. Because, I mean, even though it's titled to the sheriff's office, I've always been under the impression that. No one, the commission technically owns all real property, even if it was titled that way.
Once it's stated as surplus.
So I mean, that's, whatever you all want to do, I don't care, if you want to do, see, I don't care, we can do whatever, I just told him I thought he needed to ask.
I was just saying that that's something that's going to sit there and rot away, it's not going to be used for anything other than storage area.
Yeah, it hasn't moved in two and a half years of them.
And it can be used, proceeds can be used towards, uh, stuff that you actually are going to need.
I agree with you.
And I believe I am, uh.
Can we do a minimum bid?
Yes.
Because that is an agency that can be used over at the random for anything, right?
I thought about that, but I think that's the last thing we need, there's a house trailer, because I know they'd like to have, you know, a place, but that's no, because I did think about that already.
You're going to have some considerable cost in getting it up. You're going to, you're going to have to replace both door entrances.
No.
Not just doors, but.
It's real short for this, that's true.
But the guy changing doors, same rear door, we could certainly have about a minimum, right?
Only because.
If you sew it for pennies and then try to turn around and buy something, you're paying more for it, yeah. To make sure nobody had any plans to protect it.
Yeah, there, trust me, there's, we'd like to have a bathroom and break room at the random, but um I don't, I don't want to put a house trailer over there, I don't need a house trailer.
But I think, uh. I think I have the money in my equipment budget without having to have four to outfit the three. The two, well, three trucks. Or then what you're sold.
Well, just quickly. Just some running numbers, roughly a hundred forty six thousand, hundred fifty thousand, somewhere in there for the purchase of the three. And if you sold the two, that's sixty four thousand, so that you're really looking at um about eighty two, eighty three thousand dollars.
Which would be another.
Fifty to sixty to outfit it. Oh, great.
But then you got to subtract the two, you should subtract the two for that, shouldn't you?
Right, and then subtract three.
Yeah, so you're down again.
Well, next summer with that will be a different number for the budget, but yeah. For the three vehicles. And sell the two, we're looking at about eighty three thousand.
About two thousand.
But that's not without. That's not out there. Three quarter tons are also going to be much more expensive to run. As patrol vehicles.
What is?
The three quarter tons, and they're much, much more expensive to maintain and uh.
That, that vehicle will be assigned to Cavill, it's not going to be a patrol vehicle.
Okay.
Used.
Right, like, like the current one is, the current F two fifteen.
Uh, the other two, I will be assigned one and Chris will be assigned the other. So they're not going to be here every day.
Hold on, you're getting, you want three twenty five hundreds?
No, one twenty five hundred, two fifteen hundred.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted two twenty five hundreds and two fifteens.
The twenty five hundred. And I didn't. Upfitted.
And this is a one time deal because this truck was. Somebody who previously bought them.
Yeah, there was fifteen of these half tons purchased by some agency. And at some point after the vehicles were ordered and allocated and shipped back out. And they were, at that time, the price of those vehicles was fifty three thousand dollars. So the, the GM rep that came and talked to us actually had one with him that day. And. When we start, start talking, I mean, it's the same thing as a Tahoe, other it. Except it's a truck.
And they're black. And what is the, what is the type frame on giving him an answer?
ASAP.
Yeah, I'm sure if there's only fifteen trucks and he's out there on pedal one, please.
It's not going to sit for forty six thousand dollars.
Why wouldn't you guys just go and get a one ton rather than a ha- a three quarter ton? Because they're only like two grand more.
They're afraid of parts, right, boring the whole time. No, I'm just.
I think. I mean, the state contract on the one, I was like, didn't say this. So I'm sure Whiteside would be cheaper than that, I mean, and again, that's not really.
I can look into that, I just asked about a heavy duty truck, and this is the quote that I got.
Okay, so where's the money going to come from?
We have three budgets, right? Then you're gonna.
Well, I know the money's not there yet, but again. Rather than four repurchases next year, running into, so there's going to be a reduction in next year's budget.
Yeah, and you don't know you're going to pay for them next year, typically we lease them. But interest, well, interest rates have come way down last four years, but, and then, well, this year. But you're probably going to release them next year, it wasn't like the cash was going to be there, but. That's, I mean, it's definitely not budgeted this year, and we're about to talk about employee raises. Um, I don't know. But I'm sure that's.
Here's something you guys are going to have to look at though, we've got a lot of vehicles right now running up into a hundred and thirty and forty thousand miles. So it's either do something now and get the fleet to where it needs to be for years to come. Because none of those, none of those vehicles are under warranty. None of them.
Years to come is only four years, they last. I mean, that's.
Talking about vehicles that are around here doing jobs that none of the vehicles are doing too.
This vehicle schedule that we're on right now, though. Is the schedule that was determined to be the best to keep the fleet up.
This is, I'm proposing this, if you don't want to do it, then we pay twenty seven thousand dollars for next year, we have to buy them, we have to buy them.
And I'm just saying, I mean, in my, we've, we have this discussion with every sheriff that's ever been here, that's why I'm just, I know, I'm not, don't think I'm being argumentative, I'm just saying, like, this is.
Well, I know what, I know the trouble with check with that. Twenty twenty four silverado.
We've got a twenty twenty Durango down there that is not fitted for any. We are not going to use it in the equipment we have.
And.
Our smallest guy with his uniform on is snubbed in there tight.
And I'd like to see me through the silverado. I really would. Whatever you. It, it would save us, that thing was in, how long was it up here in the garage, about a month or more?
A month.
At least a month. Set up in the garage. It's strange. Not impressed with it. Where are your guys' thoughts?
This is where we get the money from, I guess, is. That is just fun.
Give them a load off on the three quarter ton.
If you buy the two half tons. Trade those two vehicles off. And sell the trailer. You're basically going to cover.
Almost all of that, right?
You can cover a lot. And that's kind of my thoughts. You cover. I, I do like the price of the half tons. Like you said, twenty thousand, I say twenty thousand dollars on it too.
Well, that's, I mean, it's a little less state contract, but state contract's fifty five, so you can buy one all day, any day, or, well, the three quarter ton, sorry.
Yeah, I'm talking about the half tons, yeah.
Those vehicles.
The half tons are definitely a deal right now. No questions asked there. Um.
The three quarter they got, what kind of shape is it in?
Uh, it's actually, actually, I haven't got the bill for it yet, but we just sent it away and got completely serviced. And it's. It's a decent shaped truck. It'll, it'll. It'll pull either the generator, it'll pull anything we got, really. But the main concern was having.
That's the one we were in control.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I know which one it is, yeah.
The main concern was just having, uh. Provided we do get this committee center having something additional to pull them. Rather than having the show, because you're not going to pull them when I have them.
Which do we? Yeah, my personal one, that's what I've been stuck in all winter around with. Um, so we just did the two half tons, sold the other two vehicles, and we're looking at around thirty thousand. We come up with.
And I think we can do that, and.
That's not counting the outfitting of the vehicles and all that.
Yeah, I think I have that in my budget already, we don't have to worry about it.
And the twenty five hundred's not a special package, right, it's a standard twenty five hundred, so you could order it if we're finding one.
I don't think they make a police or police package.
I'm shoot rated two four. I doubt they do, so you, it's not like there's a time.
That is a bit closer to, uh, on the grants, and once we do get a confirmation on that, we can revisit that.
So then, if we, if we did say yes to the two, I want to the fifteen hundreds. That would be one vehicle for this year, that's on the schedule, that next year you'd be looking at three.
Yeah. Still next year, we're looking at two.
Okay.
The only addition to it was adding the three quarter ton.
Okay.
To help with.
And. Again, just personally, I know you all love the Chevrolets, but all of our local dealerships are always really good with us, and I feel like unless it has to be a Chevrolet. It would be a good thing to give all three dealerships a shot to order us.
Well, Ford is not going to provide us with a package like this. They already filled the wiring harnesses, everything installed, Ford does not.
No, no, not the, not the, not the half tons, the three quarter ton.
No.
Because the half ton, that's the same tires, I get that.
The thing about this is. We're sticking with the same manufacturer, so. We know what warranty we're going to get, we know we have the rep that's working with us on it, especially with the half tons, they're the same thing, you don't have. You have everything that takes the same parts. They take the same parts that the Tahoe has, so you're not having to. Buy a different oil, different filters, different brakes, different, that's looking bad.
No, I get that, it does, anyways, it does. I'm just saying with the three quarter ton, yeah, I get it.
I, I think the three quarter ton's off the table, yeah, right now.
It'll be me, I buy three fifty four, six seven, I don't want to pay.
Well, what? You're right, let's, so we just feed this up a little bit. What is your thoughts on the two?
Yeah.
And what's your thoughts? Jason?
I'm just, where would we come up with thirty plus thousand? That's my own thought, I don't. I don't know where.
Well, you're looking at forty, you're looking at approximately forty seven. And that's forty seven, so that's ninety four thousand. So if you get, you, you're, you're going to get good money out of it, pick up Chris, I figure.
You already got twenty four for the drive.
And you got twenty four, so. I thought, that's why I came up with the verdict. You, you come up with third, okay, I got, and then we'll get a little bit out of the trailer, hopefully. So.
And if you wanted to lease those, because that's probably what we're ended up doing next year, I mean, I could get rates here in five minutes, but. And also.
Well, they're just not, they're for sale.
But whether you, whether you buy it outright or you're leasing, you're either going to pay forty six thousand or you're going to pay fifty six thousand.
No, no, but the lease. When I say lease, it's really just getting a car loan, but the legislature requires us to call it a lease.
But that's more saying the price difference between them now, buying them out right now is saving you ten thousand dollars.
Yep, I'm, I'm saying, we could buy them right now and lease them. Literally, the check just comes from Country Roads versus us, it's the same thing. It's just like if you were buying a car and you go to Webco, it's the same thing, we call it a lease, but we don't lease it.
You're talking about the.
Half tons.
Yeah, you don't lease it through GM, we lease it. We call the lease company, the lease company calls a bank. The bank gives them a rate, they upcharge the rate, and then they cut a check, and we pay a payment to the lease company every year, and then at the end of the lease, we just own it, but it's really an auto loan, but we're not allowed to borrow it.
We made an extra like finance.
You do have to pay financial charges, yes, but that's what we've always done, because we don't typically.
Well, until last year, so last year the interest rates were so high, we ended up just buying them outright.
Right, a big carrier. Yeah, big carrier.
Yeah.
But the sale of the vehicles were kind of travel. It's going back to the general founding cover.
There were.
If you are leasing, then you are, you know what you're gaining, discounted price doesn't matter.
We can do a budget revision.
I know, I'm scared of it.
We can just.
Do a budget revision real early in the year.
Yeah.
Again, because when I've done the building, right? I, I keep, I don't, I'm not a big fan of paying interest, bottom line. Of course, I don't have your money, I don't have a choice, but.
And even with. Check with Lieutenant Veal, that, that's going to put our fleet into shape.
The only.
Even with the reduction of the two from next year.
The only other place. To bring is the carryover, just talking to Luke, but um. We're still not done the building project over here, then so. And so only a month into the new fiscal year. Start even into the carryover off right off the bat, it's like.
Yeah. Well, what I'm looking at myself, because we're going to be saving next year, it costs us a little bit extra for, for one year, but then we're going to be back better. That's what I'm.
No, I, I see, which is long term.
And when you do talk about a carrier, I want to add this too, because you think that we had a carrier of our two point seven. But one point four of that, we already had obligated to our budget, so it's actually only one point two.
And like Jason said, the building project's not done, in theory, we should not have any more change orders, but we just spent money on concrete.
Well, we could add one another door.
Right, yeah, we just put, yeah, two doors, you have any paper communication story?
Yeah.
So, because our building problems aren't going to solve, I mean, I think they should slow down, but. Like you said, in theory, we would save money next year, but.
Maybe we'll, we'll get money this year. And I'm not talking for them, I'm just giving the information, I'm not dog or against them. But we're, we're going to save money next year. And we're going to. Uh. Get money this year from the sales stuff, so we're not. Spending as much as it appears to be looking to do with the man in their head.
But. And Joel, this is not meant to be anything against you, but Roger, you've been here a little bit longer than I have, and I think you know that. It always is, I want to save us money next time, and then next, this, again, this isn't. It always is, I want to save us money next time, and then next, this, again, this isn't towards you, but I've been here, and then next year, it's still be, well, we really do need.
Yeah, I'm taking his word for two next years, what I'm taking there, I'm not, I'm not saying.
Yeah, if, if that would have been the case, I wouldn't even have conferred with my lieutenant to find out if our fleet would be in good shape with this process.
Do, do you guys want me to get lease rates, or is that, I'll say, like, it's, I just, whatever you all.
Can buy these two vehicles, lease rates.
Yeah, you can lease them.
The thing, but it bothers me though, of course, it's six and one and a half dozen, because I'm looking at the interest, you do a budget revision, you're going to lose a little bit of the interest rate.
Your budget revision, you're just moving money.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Online, you're not making money up here, so you're just moving it.
No, no, but we're going to lose money. Interest, we get a little bit of interest from them.
It's still general accounting.
I know, but that's not what I asked, I know where it's coming from, I'm just saying that we're getting a little bit of interest on it.
Well, general account, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you lease them, you're paying. Interest, right, and if we, if we do a budget revision, we're losing interest, so there's.
If we're not going to lose nearly as much paying for it, then we're going to pay.
For lease, that's what I, that was my next statement, what, what's, what's compares?
I have to call, but I'm sure lease rates are probably still pretty close to five percent. I think Webco's down in like the threes, fours for personal, but he has to mark it up, because that's how it works.
Yeah.
But that way, you wouldn't have to walk all cash immediately, but it's not necessarily the better option, just.
Well, we would lose less money if we didn't budget. Yeah, is what I'm looking. Yes, yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
All of the surplus vehicles we just sold, not that. I mean, that money.
There was sixteen.
Is, it was only sixteen thousand, but not that it was in revenue, and I mean, that's how we get carryover, is by not counting on everything we have coming in. But I mean, that sixteen thousand really could be applied, because it wasn't, well, I know Roger Reel told me we were going to buy all new winch, but, um. What? They broke the winch on the F three fifty, pulling a car up on the trailer. I thought he texted me. Um, about it, so, but, I mean, that's it, that's the cost of us, but, I mean, that money could technically be applied in this direction.
And, and also, what I'm thinking, and I'm, again, this is just my thoughts. But if we wait till next summer to buy two more, we might instead of getting them for forty, forty seven, we might be paying fifty four.
I'd be paying fifty seven.
Fifty seven.
Yeah, the price of them were fifty six.
No, that's, that's the, oh, you're talking, you're talking about the Tahos. Oh, yeah, so you're paying ten thousand dollars more a piece.
And that, that's this year's price, that could be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and you're paying at least ten thousand dollars.
Because next year, you're going into, well, you're going into twenty seven and not a twenty six.
Yeah, so, are you going to end up wanting four thousand dollar caps and all that kind of stuff for them?
I have the money in my equipment budget to outfit them.
I mean, that's what, I look at what you want to save a year from now too, I look at everything, so then we'll take another year to get them outfitted.
What's her?
The approval was made for these, the equipment to outfit them will be bought today. We're not going to wait six, seven, nine a year, just to get the equipment, the, the stuff we need to get these cars. And they will come with the twenty twenty six.
For how long? Three years?
Do they get the GM fleet warranty, not the GM standard warranty?
Yeah, fleet warranty. What is it?
It's the five year hundred thousand. Is the consumer.
We just spent seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars to get the AC fixed into one. Fourteen hundred, they're one of the old. Well, actually, we had two, we had to have two of the old Tahos in for. Magnets and both were ACs, rear AC, one was a K nine unit, that was. I think seventeen hundred dollars. But we're putting Band-Aids on things that are just, when you continue to. Get older with more miles and more hours and. That's why I said, I spoke to the devil about this and asked about if the purchase of these were made now, take the two away from the following year. Again, this, I will go up to sixty six thousand more, if the fleet would be. So we could get rid of, well, we should have had more. Uh, to sell when we had them.
Option, option.
Those gov deals options aren't a big deal, though, we can sell one.
Well, we should have more.
Well, we should have had, these four should have been on the road eight months ago. Replacing some of the ones that we have now.
Oh, I get you, I get you.
I think those Tahos will sell for good. And honestly, what we need to do this time is make sure we advertise them on Facebook too, because I think more local people would have bid, I just read on the paper and put them on gov deals, we need to advertise locally.
Yeah, we had two people from up north mad at us because I didn't tell them about it. Sorry, guys, I just.
Northern County.
Yeah, they're mad, yeah, they're mad at you, nothing you all over us.
They're a lot of officials just like us.
Actually, I said water's falling, so you can.
All right, what's your, what's your thoughts? We need to move on.
I will make a motion to get the two vehicles and just pay four and a half.
The half ton of the forty six?
Yeah, two half tons.
Well, you want the. You want the, it's got the two total ninety three nine seventy.
I second that.
Very reluctant.
Yeah, he was slow.
I am too, but.
All right, now, so that's.
He's only got fifty five more things on here, so.
Don't you? Just moving on to fifty one, all right, your, uh, sniper team.
I'm going to move away from the table this, so you don't play same.
No, I'm not going to, you just pointed up there, you sit right there.
I did, and this is in general, this is the. I won't say high dollar equipment, uh, of what you're going to need to start off, that we. Have a course coming up in October, it's a five day course, uh, and is an urban sniper, that handles. And it would be a requirement to have these new equipment. They will have to have this training and certification. I don't feel like, uh, this is not a. Entity in itself where you're looking at military wise, we're not looking to have guys that are set out here twelve, thirteen hundred yards to take shots. These, this is more of an intel gathering, and yes, they are equipped to take their shots out to, in this scenario, four hundred yards in an urban environment. And the cost per person for that class is twelve hundred per person. It is low, so it will be, you know, a little travel, lodging, or anything included in that. Or the medical.
I don't know, are you still doing some?
At least, still doing some.
What did you say? Um, now, what is it going to cost us to get set up?
Okay, to outfit with a, to write a new platform that is suitable to do, they're all I got. Give you, and with five difference prices here. With the same place that we just purchased, uh, an ARS for the department, that sells a platform, was an eighteen hundred and forty dollars a piece.
You're going to need two.
Minimum of two. Yeah, minimum of two. But to completely outfit, two, two nineteen, two four, what we can, we can work. Boss provided a quote of eighteen hundred. For a platform. Rigger Precision makes a platform, which is a good platform of a sniper rifle, which. Which, again, is going to shoot at the knee, but it's probably a little bit over and above, and it's twenty one fifty. The next three are, we're doing tacticals, one is a bolt gun, forty three hundred. The other two are AR ten platforms, which are forty three hundred for one and forty seven fifty for the other.
Jeez.
Yeah, but again, that's, you're, you're looking. You're like, you're looking at a patrol rifle, you're looking at something that's losing a little bit of the difference.
How old gun are you looking out for the eighteen hundred?
Um, boss, an AR ten five four, six five Calhoun.
Six five Creedmore?
The eighteen forty, who is that seller selling?
Kentucky, same place we purchased patrol rifles. Um, the difference, well, the reason why I acquired them both, both will be either thirty caliber, three oh eight, or six five. Your six five caliber, so leap forward drastically over the last ten years because the list kills. Over the faster and straighter into thirty caliber. And with the ammunition you have today, you're going to do just as much terminal damage with that as you would a thirty caliber. Talk to him about that.
No, I never talked to him about it, did you talk to him about it?
And the, the other two things we're looking at in order, then, like I said, this is not, this doesn't include. Uh, smaller items, clothing, little things that they're, which, I didn't include that for the second fact that we hadn't loaded in, I was. Uh, the only other few necessities you're going to need, you're going to, you're going to need spotting space, because you have sniper spotter combos thirteen. So while one is on the rifle, one is on the spotter. And they're at, and all this stuff come from, uh. Uh, law enforcement discount, these are our prices, these are our public prices. Price for that is twelve eighty seven, you need two of those. And then to basically outfit the rifle, what you need is outfits, you have, I have four different models here, more Texas one for twenty four hundred. There's two different little poles, one is nineteen fifty five, the other's twenty three eighty, but my choice would be the night course at seventeen fifty five. So we're going to need either two or four, depending upon the number of rifles. That you were to equip it with.
You're looking at twenty thousand dollars?
Right, and you're, you go for, to do, just for the equipment, you're looking at eleven thousand five eighty four, that's two rifles. Two spotters to, you know, bid on those rifles. You know, maybe about five hundred eighty four dollars for that, plus your forty, that, that doesn't include your forty eight hundred for frame, so you're going to gas to the train.
You're looking at fifteen thousand per team. Rough.
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand.
That, not per team.
For two.
That's. One rifle per team.
Yeah.
Like I said, that can, that can be done, can be done. Now, the only thing I could not get a price on, because they still haven't got back to me yet, is ammunition. But just send these guys to this class, we'll be two thousand rounds of ammunition.
That's not cheap.
But that, that's, that in essence is enough to send them through the course, do the training, certify them, plus they're still going to have on hand what they need to operate. So, well, I've been, I've been, I've been with this force, and I think the most rounds, I've been through it twice, actually, the most I've ever used is. No more than three hundred rounds.
Oh, oh, because I don't know, so why now? Like, why else, like the sniper team now?
That should have been here, oh, yeah. Be bad, maybe a scenario, and again. Don't look at it as, as, these guys are going here just to shoot something, they, uh, when I was on SWAT, they would stay close. We've done numerous entries in this county, we've had sniper setting on for a twenty four hours, and given us intel, that in turn tells us when to take place. So. You have.
And then would this be part of your equipment budget?
Initial purchase, no, like there and that, yes. And again, the ammo is something that I could possibly get out of my equipment budget, I just don't have the price for that.
I don't know, let's see, what kind of ammo, you don't know.
It would be federal mastery.
Or federal?
Most likely federal mastery, you're not going to, you're going to have that mastery, yeah.
You're going to, yeah.
You can't. Right there.
Yeah, you don't.
Who knows that ball, but.
Yeah, you don't think about it, gee. Thank you, guys. One more before we sort of this thing out.
I, I would like to think about it, as well.
Everything that is, we need to work into, again, this course is October thirteenth, we'll be setting. So, I'm, I'm, well, that's helping with that, but we've, but enough to keep it to, but we'll have to make a decision from now, because we have to slot them.
Yeah, that's, let's just stay glad for just a couple weeks, make sure, understand, we're looking at around sixteen thousand for a two man team. That's not counting the boxes.
The twenty seven?
No, that's just twenty thousand, roughly.
Sixteen thousand was.
Oh, was it? No, no, it's just for the.
No, sixteen, three eighty four, that's the equipment and training, minus ammunition.
Okay.
So.
So the ammunition, the rough estimate, do you think, can begin to?
I can tell you, eight years ago, I bought a case of five hundred rounds for three hundred some dollars, but you're not going to get that.
You don't get, no.
When you're in ATK and awesome door.
If you go, or they're growing up on the door and say, hey.
I don't think you're.
The things they shoot from there, you hope you use a sniper, they don't, they don't much for.
I never dreamt, we talked about that too, during the call, so.
So I didn't roll, that's actually pretty cheap.
Yeah, but that's.
So, not saying anything, minus the training, but.
And how often do they do this training?
This. Again, I don't, I don't, I don't think he has set dates for it, it's when he has much for it, and he can slot so many people for that class. And the thing about it is that he slots people for that class, because he has to have a minimum to do the class. He slots eight, and has eight coming, and then we back out, but he.
So how often would they have to, with more training, every train, or?
Once they, this, that's the thing about it, this one will teach them what they need to do for those things. This isn't your, drop your Navy SEAL to the muck on this, and they had fifty rounds, that's enough, that's enough, this is, well, that's your. Equipment for the classes, state of mind. Anything after this, if they just. They fall behind the good range and sharp gear, which we have all that.
All right, yeah, let's just hold on. Put down next meeting.
And then I'll come down there, I can at least have ammunition.
Yeah, okay, next meeting, okay. Precisely, you're up again with the satellite.
No, additional manpower.
Additional manpower, I'm sorry, additional manpower.
Um, still the same, we still have one vacancy. We're going to have to, often we'll be in that, we have to, again. It's currently, we want to have one from the previous test site, the old site, I don't know if we can, through. So. I was contacted by a individual that is currently a rail state trooper, planning on retiring, possibly September. Will be available to be hired January one.
He's got to test it through. You don't, you don't have to test?
He's already certified, he doesn't have to go through the academy. We'll have to take his qualifications and everything to left, just transfer to another, and he gets all three of them. He's showing two.
He still has to take the cert certificate.
Oh, yeah, he's going to have to do all.
That's what.
That's what he tests.
That's what, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, yes.
Okay. Well, you, you've got a base, you have.
Once you exhaust. Once you exhaust all the lists that we have, maybe you need to send me a list or a letter that says you are all candidates. At your request in the past, if we can start that process.
But I have a question, when we do that, we've run it for a month.
The only reason we did last time is cuz you didn't play. Yeah, the idea is to get as many applicants as we get, as we can.
I don't think there is any longer. And maybe when we get some forty to fifty to apply, so.
I'd love to. Go. All right, how about your satellite office?
Current location, when I think that, I don't think it will be suitable. So I probably won't go over to other areas, I have a location in mind. But I don't wanna really discuss a whole lot involved in that. I don't wanna hook the price up there to shit, to possibly put it out.
Yeah.
People fair. Um, but if we can. Take that again and.
Yeah.
Just wanna have it out for the current locations, probably wanna go to. I might work on it, you know, some more information on. That stuff, so.
The next agenda.
Yeah.
Were you, maybe it's the first September, first of September, of course.
Now, next, now, next meeting, do you wanna follow?
Yeah.
Yeah, going sometime.
Yeah, I can share about, about this one, how does it, people is in the county.
Uh, that's definitely what happened.
Oh, yeah. So just to let you know, is this, if, if, if this goes through, we don't know for sure yet. This was discussion, debate, and decisions to be made, but this will help with the people in the north end of the county. To assess themselves, to pay their taxes. Uh, cuz we'll have a little satellite office there, where. Couple, a, a day or two a week, we don't know how much, two days a week, well, we're looking at them, okay, that they could go and. Save the people coming to Kaiser all the time.
And.
And.
Also going along with that, it is a north end satellite office for the sheriff's office.
Yeah. It'll be down in that area someplace, what we're looking for.
If there's people arrested, they'll be able to process them there, and think I'm ever gonna to vesta. If they're to be jailed, rather than running the Kaiser and then they'll vest them soon.
That would be a little bit, that would be a little amount of savings. Okay, so we'll table that to the first meeting in September. Uh, Luke, we're good with the concealed being on the trailer? Being the trailer, you, you got any more questions on that?
No, I'll go with the sheriff, we can. I'll go with you next.
That's not wrong, that's the only.
Whatever you guys wanna do, sorry, I.
I don't care.
Wherever you think we get the most money. I, I truly have no idea, I don't know what the market is like, probably, deals or sealed bids.
I don't, I don't know either, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys at the time.
I'd rather you all decide.
What, I don't care where you sell them. Which is fast time, I have two things.
They're both gonna be the same speed.
You have to advertise.
They have to advertise.
I have two things, make sure it's legal and where we can get the most money.
Yeah, that's. I, I honestly think we're gonna get the most money out of a live auction, which would be what gun deals is. Um, just because people get tied up into the bidding. Cycle of things, rather than just going to close bid. Okay, I'll put out two thousand dollars for this, and that's what they put the bid in for. I'm saying that's what it's worth or anything, but just, just an example.
You can set a minimum of that.
Yeah, 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 you can set a reserve.
So we can find out what it's worth second memory.
Yeah.
That big could.
I find whatever you want.
I, I would think we should do.
I think we better do on gun deals as well.
Same way, let me ask you this, same way with the two meter? I mean, that's two eight, we're already.
Yeah, and the, well, the one, yeah, Hampshire wants a Durango.
Now, what we can look into as well, um. If, uh. If GM does approve it and if the pay was, they would give us. The, everybody, so they say at the dealership up here says, okay, we're doing it for four thousand dollars, allow us to, we just had a trade for. Purchasing the team. We're looking at that, I don't know.
We are allowing, great, you guys know that because of the F one fifty, the others office said code doesn't specifically allow it, however.
We just don't know for sure if that's something they'll do.
Okay. I would imagine the white side would take it though on trade, wouldn't they?
This isn't the, the two.
Oh, it's directly from GM.
Directly from GM issue.
We auction that, we're not gonna get. Maybe my, but I doubt we even get trade value out of it.
Well, Silverado, think so?
Cuz I don't feel like people who are on auction sites are, like, I don't feel like you're looking for brand.
Dealerships, dealerships will be involved in sealed bids, right?
I don't understand the question.
Dealership wanted to buy that truck back to us.
Oh, do you? Yeah, we can do a sealed bid, yeah, yeah, well, and honestly, though, you know, while I'm here, they were willing to buy the truck straight out when we bought that F one fifty. If we would have bought for them, so yeah, I guess we could. Yeah, yeah, I guess, cuz it's. I. Honestly, we'll be.
These days, so just to ensure that we don't get.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, Silverado is gonna get much more complicated, but I don't.
I think that would be a hurt itself. I mean, it's only got. Twelve fourteen thousand dollars. But we just don't want the headache of replacing the. Wire and things, twelve thousand.
Anyone who's watching this meeting will just definitely wanna buy it.
Yeah.
And then what about all the, I don't just say, those they jump with stuff? All this surplus equipment, the desks and.
So I plan on having a yard sale, but I was waiting until probation moves in.
Well, that's what.
Cuz last time we did make a little bit of money on the yard sale. Um, and then whatever we don't take, the guys are just gonna dump.
Yeah.
Um, I think the sheriff has, wants to do something with those.
But I wanna wait until you, or anybody gets what they needed, there were some things I was like, Brad, before I went for. But I wanna make everybody else have what they need, I need some shelving and some chairs yet.
Yeah, they, I know.
But it's like, that's like face to head.
Yeah.
What about actually having a, a live auction?
I mean.
Would that bring in a good price for that trailer?
I, I don't know. I thought the reason we wanted to start doing gun deals was when they did the live auctions, they were getting nothing out of the cars, basically, like they're selling for a couple hundred bucks.
We have three local people that have already contacted me on that female trailer, and they bid on that gun deal.
Oh, anyway, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's like eBay for government.
I've never heard.
Oh, no.
You spend hours looking at what's on that site, you can narrow it down to vehicles, equipment, desks, the office supplies.
So we're selling gun deals, I'm not putting a minimum with it, or what's, uh? What I'll do is rather than doing a reserve, I'll do the starting bid at that price. We'd have to get someone to appraise it, but that's what Jason, I remember that, we're gonna, appraisal's gonna cost you a couple hundred dollars.
Well, Roger's got him.
What's that?
You could probably have, like, having to.
Yeah, you know, anybody that needs to put that.
No, I don't. I think you praise it, say it's worth this much, but I don't have any credentials.
Well, we don't have to have a credential person, but it just needs to be somebody who has an idea so that. The price is a way off. I mean, what year is it?
Probably nineteen sixty eight.
Well, I know somebody who sold a trailer their kid lived in, looking out for like fifteen grand, it was, I mean, it was. Yeah, old trailer, like.
Uh, I don't know, I have no clue what to, everything you.
Then you work today.
Yes. But everything, it's, it's our site, these trailers anymore, used to be cheap. Now, you're looking a hundred thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I know someone who.
Two thousand six.
I was close to saying two thousand.
That's twenty years old.
Do you think ten thousand would be a reasonable?
Two thousand six.
Start, well, truly, we could start at the ten thousand, and if it doesn't sell, then we release a lower price. Unless you all think it's worth even more than that, but I can't imagine it's worth much. So. We could start lower, whatever you all wanna do, I just.
I wouldn't eat, no, I'd start off at ten, dinner.
Well, so am I good with that? Okay, so we're selling the female trailer, one gun deals, starting bid ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, if I can find somebody to give us a quoted value of it. I'll, I'll try to do that.
And if it, well, if it's higher than ten, yeah, of course, no, we can't start it at the value of it because.
Right, yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, if you can get ten or twelve thousand dollars out of it, I'd take it, I'll make a promotion, have we. Started ten.
To put out on gun deals?
Yeah.
And minimum ten.
You all tell me, I, I think that's fun. I would give nothing. I don't have a place for a house trailer. We got a house to keep up with.
What are you, what about, you're gonna try to find a price for the silver auto?
Yeah. I'll have Chris take it to the dealership and get a value.
Yeah, I, I was thinking blue book also for, during my life.
And then put it on gun deals at blue book or. Accept sealed bids with a minimum.
I wanna get the endo trucks and get them up and run them before we go and sell that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, we, yeah.
Yeah. I would give very. We've been a real curry. Nice to let us hold off on that.
Because I don't.
If we can sell it, sell it, cuz we have a car to put him in. Until the truck gets here.
Is anybody using a Durango?
It's when we go, but we still have, he can drive one of the new ones, granted, it may not have a light bar in it yet, but that's fine. We have something for him to drive, we have the opportunity to sell it, I think we should.
Now, you know about this, but make sure you give him something where the lights are to the bridge.
And any cat.
There's a reason for that.
How much do you think that truck's worth, forties?
I don't know, it don't have that many miles on it.
We've only had it for like a year.
Yeah.
It's a twenty four.
Fifteen, they say fifteen thousand. I, I mean, no. Yeah, last summer.
You drop then that traverse.
But regarding the twenty twenty Durango, that Hampshire was about the twenty. So you guys, we make so much, I want to ruin that transaction.
I'll make a motion, sell Durango, the twenty twenty Durango to Hampshire County for. I second that, yeah, I'm good with that. And I'll make a motion, go, but that Silverado, one gun deal.
Well, well, I'm sorry, Jason and I are at the side conversation.
Okay.
Um. That, of course, you're worried about the wiring harness, I said that would be better for OEM to have them traverse, and it's already outfitted. We literally just gotta switch the lights out with red, but we either have to.
You wouldn't have to switch it out, I think they could be perfect, if, oh, so all you do is just change the, Roger can do that, you want the Silverado?
Well, just the other day, when we needed to get a pallet of water, for the nursing home, we had to call Jason.
Yeah, I used my truck to, like, and then. That's so much. Because this truck, because this truck is, had issues.
That's, that's true.
That's something you're gonna have to possibly.
I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Say, don't you want a county truck?
I do, but it's got a tonneau and it's full of equipment.
I didn't mind, I asked. Wouldn't either, I, I wouldn't, I don't, I honestly. Yeah, I wouldn't.
Between that and the negative reviews over that four cylinder and a half ton of.
Yeah, it's not a four cylinder?
Yeah. Four cylinder.
So Des made a motion to put it on gun deals with the minimum.
Okay, forty.
Minimum.
Get that, we'll get that front, uh, I second that.
So, we're putting the trailer on gun deals, ten thousand dollars. Trailer two thousand six. And then we're gonna put the Silverado. One gun deals, I always think I wanna remember these things, I don't. One gun deals with a starting bid of forty, or we just wanna get the fair trade. Okay.
I'll get that.
Do, do you have to start them out there, can you put a reserve?
We can put a reserve.
I think I'd put a reserve.
Then just go lower starting.
Yeah. People sending texts, okay, I just want to do two four.
Trade in value. So put the reserve at trade in value and then just start the bid lower than trade. You get a value and start.
Or a bit, a couple thousand dollars then.
Worth a trade, but listen, that's trade value. Okay. But we can do those things, take them care of next week then.
I just need some first orders for those two.
Yes.
Did I give you that?
Oh, I believe in God.
All right, do you, you have anything with K nine fund?
No, actually, that's me.
All right.
Okay, so if, we have previously, before last, we discussed the K nine fund. And in the last meeting, I mentioned that the L E P C fund, and you all made a motion to put that under the county commission. But in reviewing the fund number, um, and that it was not listed as a fund in the, uh, West Virginia, uh, charter accounts. As a governmental fund, pulling the code sections, it looks like it should never have been a separate fund. Okay, so it should actually just be a department within general county. And which already has, uh, by the code, uh, charter accounts, has a department number. So what I'm asking is to go ahead and transfer the funds that are currently in L E P C into general county. And to set up that department for L E P C, you have to do a budget revision for that. And then, and discussing it with Luke, um, it does have, uh, some set amounts, and when we do our budget every year. We just need to ensure that we're carrying over those funds that are in there into the next year.
Sure, now to make a long story short, what are you suggesting we do?
To cut it, to transfer the funds from L E P C into general county and to set up a department. An L E P C department within general county.
We have to do a budget revision.
And we'll have to do a budget revision to set a bunch before that.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then as for the K nine. In reviewing it, it's questionable whether it should not have been its own fund, that it should have actually been a department within general county too. But it's not as clear, code section on L E P C was clear that it should have been under general county. Um, with K nine, I think we will go ahead and leave that in its own fund because of the seminar. And handling those costs with the seminar. But we did already get the checks for the K nine, we already signed the signature card for the K nine, so it's already been transferred over. But I told them to help hold off on the L E P C until we got this confirmation.
With L E P C, is it going to be a problem? We buy food every other month for those meetings.
But you shouldn't be, either way.
It's that.
Well, actually, if you look at code, there's some things that are covered under that.
Well, I'm saying, is it going to be a problem because the, the state, that cert commission, the branch is literally written to buy food for you. Like, that's literally one of the reasons I give it, that's, that's pretty.
I'd have to look at it again, cuz that was last week when I read it. But there are going to be limits.
Every L E P C in the state does that, and that's like.
There was something in that L E P C code, something about, they don't get, they don't get paid members. But. I'll have to read that.
They provide lunches, yeah, I mean, that's what we get, I'm, I'm just making up the number, we get a thousand dollars a year specifically to buy food for. Needings, that's one of the things all of us still.
And that's from the state.
Yeah, we get that money from the cert commission.
For that purpose, and then we just have to monitor that it doesn't go over that.
Yeah, I guess, because the state literally sends us a check for the others, all the census, the check to reimburse food for five.
And I think that had to something to do with the membership, um, they didn't, like I said, they don't get paid, but there was a. Allotment or something, I, I thought it saw something, but.
Well, I'm saying, if this is what we need to do, it's what we need to do, but I'm just saying.
This is what we need to do.
Yeah, the food.
Because it should not have been its own fund, and it should just be a department within general county. And then also to meet the regu- requirements, who was allowed to be purchased from tax payer money.
Did you give us a sheet of breakdown, the package of that, or you're just verbalizing?
Play numbers.
Is there anything in our packet that shows what you're talking about?
I haven't given you numbers, okay, you mean code section?
Yeah.
I got fifteen dash five eight seven. Fifteen dash five eight five. Fifteen dash five eight six. So five, six, and seven, I guess, for the food section. Fifteen dash five eight five. Five eight six, five eight seven. So we will go ahead, I told Shelley at the bank to hold off on uh, signature cards for L E P C. And then we'll just have that, the certified check for the balance, cut to General County, transfer that over and set up a department in General County. And that budget will be visioned, hopefully, at the next meeting, I'll have a budget revision. I was gonna have a budget revision for this meeting, for some things that were missed on the last budget revision, but I don't have the approved budget revision back from. The state yet to make those adjustments, and I can't do a new budget revision until I have those adjustments made.
So, L E P C, the fund number now, is it?
Not in charter accounts. Okay, one oh five, I think she's what, she has under?
Federal government grants.
Federal government grants at three twenty-two, that's a residue.
The federal government grants are all.
One oh five, three twenty-two is what she put in there.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you guys.
Then you got that, you much of it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, one oh five is a federal government grant fund. And they probably did that because it is, all of the funds for L E P C are federal grant funds.
Which we were getting half the checks for going into General County, half the checks for going into L E P C because of the back and forth.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I just, the only thing I said was the, they are.
It's all federal, that's the only thing that comes in for it?
It's just grants, yeah.
It's all federal grants.
I think so, and it might be TRT reporting fees from services, let me see. But it's definitely state federal grants, that's it. It's truly potato pot, probably, I don't care where the money comes from. Yeah.
Well, either way, unless you wanna keep it under one oh five, but it still, it still does switch over to the three state.
You can do the sharing, I truly don't care, just as long as we don't get a problem every time we order food for eating, that's.
Well, whether it's. General County, or whether it's one oh five, they're still the same with farms, pack fair money. So you just wanna leave it under one oh five?
It doesn't bother me where you put it, it truly doesn't, I'm just talking about the lunch.
When I had a talk to Luke, uh, well.
We talked about it briefly.
Briefly, briefly.
Yeah, I, L E P C is absolutely a department under the county, I don't have a problem with that, I was just, the lunch is the only thing, but it's. It can, it can move to serve kind, it doesn't bother me a bit.
Okay, if you got that hashed out, let's move down to found, found public service district.
We guys have to make a motion.
Made a motion to um, move the department, we did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Public services, you found.
Can I, can I?
Yes, sir, please do.
Okay, so, so working on, uh, I believe I discussed at the last meeting, uh, getting some preliminary stuff together for. Uh, wireline extension going over Frymeat Ridge and out, uh, Headsville Road, along with several other roads that branch all from there. Um, it would be a pretty big project, right now, the. Engineer is looking at a seven point three million dollar project, and he has a list here of some different type of funding, one thing that he's looking at is. Uh, he's looking at a two point two million dollar loan for twenty, point two five percent interest for forty years, but it's, um. If, and he's asking basically this letter, uh, we put together, is asking the county to help. Fund some of this water project, um, I know we don't, and I told him upfront, I said, I, county doesn't have the money to. Doesn't have money to help put into this, uh, especially these numbers you're talking about, um. Which, it's something for us to consider. As commissioners, and this is another reason why I wanted off the board, cause I feel like it's conflict of interest that I'm trying to get money from F A P S D, but then I'm also a county commissioner. So, that's another reason I kinda wanted to step away from this board, but, uh, oh, but I also wanna, I don't wanna completely step away from this project. Um, it would get a lot of people in, uh, the Headsville area that can actually light their water fire. Out of the spigot, so that they can get some good water, um, and I would like to talk to some more people, Charleston. I really wanna get out to. The customers that would be affected in this area, if they would sign up. The more people we have to sign up, again, granted, I understand they have to put out two hundred bucks. But if they would sign the contract and put out the two hundred bucks, that would look so much better, and we would have a lot better opportunity getting grants and other funding. Without having to getting a loan, if we get a loan, then we're gonna have to raise the water rates again. Um, and, and those, I've said it a million times, those water rates in Fountain are already too high. But, uh, because of the bonds and stuff that they have gotten, the loans they have gotten. To do the water extension and serve people with the water, it's just, it's getting outrageous. Uh, but we, we have got to get people in that area to sign up. We just need people to sign up and, and then possibly be able to go to Charleston and talk to people and get more money allotted to us.
Uh, have they contacted, uh, Region Eight about borrowing money?
They, uh, I don't think they have talked to contact with each of they get that.
When Jerry was involved in some of that, he hasn't really had to go door to door and get people.
So Region, so Region Eight is involved in the project. So they, they are going door to door, they're going door to door to do an income survey. Uh, with people that are willing to do that, but then they're also spreading information to them as well to. Hey, you need to sign up, it'll help us get them grant money and that kinda thing. So. But I didn't know if they approached them about borrowing, I don't even know what their interest rate is anymore, it's originally, I don't know. D E P, D W T R F, I'm not sure what that is.
That, that one loan there is point, a quarter of a percent, that's not bad.
No.
For forty years, so forty years, but still, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's cheap interest.
Very, very cheap.
Any fountain has fallen down way on the rankings for their cost of water, they're down like two ninety-six now.
What are you, thirty?
For the highest in the state.
They're down to two ninety-six? Really?
Oh, hold on, it's in the off sort of what they used to be, out of three twenty-nine. It used to be one was the highest. Went down costing thirty-six.
It's all that, they can't afford for sure. They can't afford what they done in shows.
Oh, they got two million left?
I didn't know.
And, and, you know, then they're looking, and this, this project's a dilemma, it's honestly a dilemma, cause it's getting to the point where. Their system gets so big, they really need to hire somebody else, they really need to get somebody that can operate equipment, um. Explanator back or whatever, and hire it by equipment to be able to do this work herself, right now, they sold out to everybody, that costs a bit of money. If they had to run equipment and people that can do it in-house, and it's actually saving them some money. But lots of parents by off the street is qualified to be able to dig around, or on, it's, it's a little hard to find. So, anyway, that's about it, I don't think we need to move on, cause unless, you guys, I'm able to make a motion to give them. Have a million dollars or something, but.
And if you're wondering, their rates are currently just shy of seventy-two dollars per thirty-four hundred gallons, so they are.
I wish we could give them, I hope we don't pass the years. Can we do a budget revision? You know. That's how much it costs us to run the count? And the same thing about it, you don't need, or they need it. There's a lot of them that need to, that's just.
Uh, yeah, we can people sign up, I, I think it really helps us be able to get grant money, so, you know.
Said lightning, being able to light their water fire.
Yeah, that's, and it's a problem with Farrah Hollow, what happened with Farrah Hollow, is that, uh. Not, not enough people signed up, that's why they couldn't finish it back, through that back part.
And that's where they really. It's getting so water throughout our county, a lot of places needs water, we can't give.
This. This is an interesting issue, I mean, I don't. Being not appropriate to talk here, to talk offline or whatever, but. Uh, the legislature had, um, community over near Elkins. Versus water, and you know. There is the ability to basically force, uh, water, one water company to take, take over another.
Yeah.
This situation, one community twenty miles away from Elkins, and they, that was the closest proximate. Uh, water district, and at what cost, the question becomes, being basically in that distant location. Serving twelve homes. At what cost, when do you say, put a well in?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, it's a, it's a growing problem.
Well, the problem we're running into though, is not these people don't have water, it's they have very low quality wells, and they're not able to get.
So, Warren brought the point up, and you may recall, especially those of you that are further to the south end, like Annie Op and all. Lighting water on fire is not an ink wrap here. Uh, Burgessville got kinda to the head of the list there when lighting their water on fire at the national.
I don't, I don't know of anybody in our area that can light your water.
Well, you're saying this, I was curious, I was gonna call.
Mr. Richie came and showed us.
Richie, whoa. Where's she at?
Susan Fleet, where it runs into Headsville.
Oh, that's.
Chief Stagger's Road.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's down around that area.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't know of any in any.
So, I knew there's some, so further west along the road, not, not down by the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Down by Patterson Creek?
Yes.
Out of the world.
Really?
Oh, it's a very problem.
Well, I know it's not the district I represent, there were some folks there that seemed to be extremely well connected.
John, John Ritchie.
I've heard of you.
He was a teacher.
Everybody calls him Jake.
Jake, yeah.
That's sad.
Well, could lead to other issues as well, and this is harking back to my own childhood, but. Friend's house literally lifted off the foundation when their well. Just accumulated a whole bunch of methane gas. Pumped it off, so the house.
You know what, and I'm gonna make a statement here, I had problems with sulfur. In my well after the earthquake, do you know what I was instructed to do, and it worked? Vent your well.
Vent it.
Vent it, and then, you know, it got rid of the sulfur, it took a little time, cause all it is, is a form of gas.
If, if you haven't hit an actual sulfur pop there, you know.
No, it, when the earthquake. Brought it in, and it worked, I don't have sulfur now, but I had sulfur.
Yeah, there's a lot of people with sulfur water, right?
Yes, they are. Yes. Okay, sorry to do that, we need to move on, make this contract.
This is our yearly renewal, and reviewing the levels, um. I don't see where we need to change any of them with what's needed, uh, and actually, I can't really say because they involve the assessor's office and the sheriff's office, if. Um, the required services that we need, the tax internet inquiry, the tax online payments, tax collection. The sheriff accounting, assessor supplements. Just need a motion to renew the. Maintenance contract with software systems.
I'll make the motion to renew that, I'll second that, okay.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, T P M, requesting a letter of support to go to their, uh.
Yeah, they're fine, they're the West Virginia First Foundation for some money, and they just asked for, asked for a, uh, letter of support for what they've been doing. Uh, I was gonna write something up, and I didn't get a chance to, but, um, just need the approval of. Send that letter of support, or if we, I guess, we should have a letter before we make the approval.
Honestly, grant letter, that's up to you all with grant letter of sports, um, unless it's something super controversial, I've even sent them without. It's just saying they're a decent agency and do what they say they're gonna do, but you all, however you all want to hear it.
Depending, you just send it to them?
Yeah, I make the motion. I'll see, sure, I agree, I agree. Okay, transmission line.
Oh wait, did you wanna send that, or do you want me to send it?
You're welcome to send it, but I'll, whatever you all want me to do, if you wanna send it, you can, I don't care.
I'll send it.
Okay, transmission.
Um, this is just what I said earlier, I think I would have had to ask her, but that on the agenda, just reaffirming that we. Even though we chose the route, and explain why we chose that route, but just reaffirming that we are against this transmission line and. Um, just basically what I said before.
Also, just to ask, they are a second meeting coming up on that, down at Brookdale Farms?
Yeah.
What, I don't know when it is, but I know there's one coming up.
There's one next Tuesday in Hampshire.
There's one down Brookdale Farm, but I don't know when it is for sure.
Yeah, I heard there was one recently, yeah.
Where's it at in Hampshire County?
One in Hampshire is at, um, Mills, Ball Office at seven, it's a smaller group though.
Where's it at?
It's right on. It's right on Main Street, like zero six Main, East Main.
Oh, okay, I know we're helping, just.
That's Tuesday evening at, um, Eaton Fraser and Millicent fifty-six East Main. That's, um, seven P M on the nineteen. So that's probably a very small, anybody type.
Okay.
So there's another one, there is another one at Brookdale, it's on Thursday, the twenty-first. At six o'clock.
Twenty-first?
Yeah.
What time did you send me?
Six o'clock.
Based on the fact that that's at Eaton Fraser, Millicent, Dante, um, are they getting involved to help stop it? Cause they, they are like, they're just hat there.
I'm not aware of that, but I may discover that on Tuesday.
Cause they are like, well, you probably don't, but I mean, they are the real estate attorneys here, like they're probably best, or the area.
Okay.
Um, they.
Trying to remember who all was at the meeting that Hampshire had. They had a.
I know, August twenty-first, next Thursday.
They had Keaton at the. Meeting at Hampshire County. Talking about legal aspects, as well as creating C about the real estate aspects and all areas. More people and answer questions.
Okay.
All right, are we done with that, let's move down to change your format for the commission meeting, discuss possible approval of signing sheet, comments with public.
Well, like in this last meeting, I'd like the lawyers to have a signing sheet for all the, uh, attendees. And an option for them to check a box if they wanna speak. Uh, and then add into our agenda, at the beginning of our agenda, probably after we, um. Do the approval or the minutes, or before we do the correspondence, put in their, uh, public.
Comments.
Public comments, and at that time, that's when the people that signed up that would like to speak, that's when they can stand up. Gives their call to one, they give them three minutes.
Call them, say three minutes.
So I'd like to make that motion that we do that.
And I'll second that. I agree, I think that would be very good. Give these two ladies here, we've got a chance to push their thing. If you have your con Comcast.
So, um, all of our Comcast contracts, for the most part, have expired, so our promo pricing has also ended. Um, I had a wholesaler reach out, um, Brandon is the name of the company. Um, they wholesale Comcast services, um, and looking at them, they're a, they're a pretty large company, um. And they can provide us the same services we're receiving now from Comcast. Literally, still through Comcast, but they wholesale them to us. Um, at about a six hundred and fifty-one dollar a month savings, um. Now. Wanted to explore that and see if that's something you all would be interested in, it honestly, to work. Wanted to explore that and see if that's something you all would be interested in, it honestly, to work with them would be easier than Comcast, our account executive that I worked with at Comcast left. Um, and it was fantastic when I had him, but he's gone, I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever tried dealing with one eight hundred number, but that's a nightmare. Um. So this company, you have one point of contact for all of your maintenance, one point of contact for all of your sales. And it's not calling one eight hundred number, all of the accounts are invoiced together. Um, and everything's under a single account, right now I think we have a dozen Comcast accounts and we get a dozen bills. Um, so everything would be invoiced together as one single account and. The only reason I consider continued pursuing it is because it's almost an eight thousand dollar a year savings.
Savings, eight thousand a year of.
So this is like the internet at the dog pound and not ones that are like everybody under one?
Yes, other than, yes, it would put all the Comcast accounts under one account.
Yeah, give a breakdown which each one of those would be then, so that they can bill properly.
There you go. Oh, well, we um. We, when we moved to Comcast, put everything under one mind anyways, we stopped doing it all under, um. But I mean, to me, it seems like a pretty good deal, um, I have talked to them pretty extensively, um. The biggest thing would be to just, there would be install costs. Um, we probably just had to manage to do the installs for us, it's their tech rates, the tech rates for the company. Granted, are a hundred nine to a hundred and forty-five an hour to do the installs.
What do they need to install?
They take out your old modems, but they just put them. And we return our old modems to Comcast, because we leased them from Comcast.
They're using different mode.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any other wholesalers out there that we could talk to?
Um, I mean, I could. Explore and bulk, I don't really know.
I'm sure I'm looking into that wholesale thing, that I got away from it, that pursued it further, but. That was when we was looking at doing a countywide wireless, direct wireless. Or that's what I was looking at.
Okay.
Doing a countywide direct wire to system, but, um. I'm sure there's other wholesalers out there. If we could get a hold of the right person at Comcast. They could do us a wholesale. Deal. But I don't know who to get a hold of Comcast.
Well, and when I had, like I said, we had a dedicated account, account executive when we switched everything over, he's left. Um. So, cause I always had a cell phone number and I could call him for anything and that was fantastic, because dealing with that one eight hundred was. Vicious. Um. I mean, yeah, I can. Explore other wholesalers, um. And see, you think there's more cost savings to be realized or?
Possible, I mean, there are a lot of them.
Yeah, I can, um.
I like that number already, but.
Yeah. It took, it took a little bit to get to this number, but I can, um. Yeah, I can explore other wholesalers as well, like I don't even know, um.
How long would this contract be for, the eight thousand, say?
So three-year contract. And the price, their pricing stays the same for all three years. Cause that is one thing with Comcast, we had really good rates at the beginning. And at the time when we did it, I had the intentions of negotiating as contracts expired, not on. Like, got to do that, because you have to do that for the one eight hundred number. Um. But there probably would be some. Do you have a list of some wholesalers?
I did.
Okay.
I had to look it up, see if I can find it in my notes.
So I can. Cause like I can Google it, I just don't wanna end up with some. Here's the actual wholesaler from Comcast, yeah, I can definitely reach out to them. Yeah, I can, um. Continue exploring that, um. Yeah.
Okay, so you were back on that then, right?
Yeah, give me some time, but, because I think the next mission meeting is only a week away, isn't it?
Yeah.
Week and a half.
Week and a half, yeah, I'm not, I don't come back to, I can be pulled up in.
Alright, so. Okay, uh, first two EMS box area issue.
Three more?
Yeah, so, um. Just to make it short and simple, O E M S said. Okay, so the area of Piedmont, Tri-Towns EMS responds and first two. Um, they handle all the EMS calls there. Um. And O E M S called basically more or less said, that's not okay, it's the West Virginia license agency primarily overseeing area. Um. So what I'd like to do is talk to Kaiser EMS. Put them as primarily responsible for the area. The, um. County will assign that area to Kaiser EMS, but then work with Kaiser EMS to do a mutual aid agreement with Tri-Towns to handle that area first too. Um, because mutual aid agreements are for anytime, you just simply don't have the resources or manpower to handle what you can handle. Um, so I think. It sounded to me, as long as we do something, it's fine, um. So if we sign that area fifty-seven and fifty-seven doesn't meet trade agreement with fifty, I think that would solve our problem, then fifty-seven would just be second due, but fifty-seven would technically be the licensed agency that. Manages the area of fifty, it's so much money for students, it would be. It would be silly to put fifty-seven there first to a non-alert fifty, because it takes Westernport. Two minutes to get into Piedmont, it'll take fifty, and fifty-seven's volunteer too, fifty has paying staff. Or fifty-seven, they do an excellent job responding, they handle their end for sure. Um, but it takes seven minutes to out door and then ten minutes to get Piedmont and people are used to having handles there at five.
Yeah.
Um. So that's how I'd like to handle that, I kinda had a discussion with Colby about it a little bit, um. And we all feel like maybe that's, and Dr. Curvos. Um, I kinda feel like maybe that's the best way to handle that, because technically you're all's decision, should oversee EMS.
I thought it has to be done that way, if that's your.
Well, I gotta make sure Kaiser EMS wants to do that way too, but I didn't wanna start approaching people, so I knew what you were doing.
I think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah.
So we need to make a motion.
I know. Well, what I'll do, well, yeah, go ahead and make a motion to. Uh, tentatively assign the area to Kaiser EMS more than mutual aid.
Okay, so, actually, we, uh, tentatively sign Kaiser EMS. And we give mutual agreement with, um, fifty?
Yeah, it's a Tri-Towns.
Tri-Towns EMS. I'm starting to approve that also.
Yeah, and then I'll get with all parties involved and try to have that thought there potentially as well.
All right, actions for the building project.
Second.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing. Anyone present for the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm here.
I don't think anyone has the opinions, the voice. Lauren, for the public hearing stuff, it's been, do we have to do anything special there or is it just? Be available to hear, it was published.
I think kind of to recess the commission meeting, they call it into public hearing and then you wait and a couple minutes and then. Yeah.
I'd make your motion that we recess the commission meeting. For this reading of the building project, same. I agree with that.
Go into the public hearing?
Yes.
It's funny the things that require public hearings, because people don't really care about this. Like, there's all kinds of things people care about that don't require it, but. Like.
Obviously, not much comments.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Then you can move forward.
And then just. I go, we gotta do the second reading.
Go back in session.
We go back to, do we have to actually read that?
Luke, you got it too?
Yeah, I can read if you want to, that's not, you know, the ordinance, the ordinance is this thing.
Yeah, we don't wanna hold that.
To consider on second reading and act upon a proposed order, ordinance entitled. An ordinance authorizing the payment of the prior note and the permanent financing of the cost of design, acquisition and construction and equipping of the judicial annex for Mineral County. Authorizing the leasing of such facilities by the county commission from the Mineral County Building Commission. Approving the sale, issuance and delivery of not to exceed seven million dollars lease revenue bonds. Series twenty twenty-five, aided by the Mineral County Building Commission to provide funds to finance a portion of the cost of such design. Acquisition and equipping of the judicial annex and related costs and expenses. Prescribing the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement and lease and other instruments and authorizing and approving other documents and matters. Relating to the terms and security of such bonds and providing for certain other matters in connections there with. If you guys wanna approve.
You forgot to read.
All other matters related to the.
Oh, oh, you said it.
Okay, I was reading up in there, okay. Except the second read. And I agree, I, and the second, uh, uh, read it that also.
Actually.
Okay.
If I understand correctly. You all would actually accept the ordinance to stay in the building commission, that's three readings, but you all can't see it. Um. So if you wanna go ahead and make the motion, just don't read the ordinance, and if, if we have to do it third, we will, but I'm ninety percent sure this is what it's supposed to be.
I make the motion and we set the ordinance. I'll second after you approve that also.
Lauren, I will just go as soon as possible.
For sending a motion that we go back into.
And we did that after the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. We went back in the session after public hearing.
Okay. Yeah. You, Lauren, you got, uh, hear about the Scotts approved, the impossible solid increase or?
Yeah, I kinda mentioned individually to each of you to give you a heads up, but, um. What, what kind of proposing is the base pay right now, if you do it by hourly rate? Yeah, the base pay is at fourteen fifty-five an hour. So if we added another forty-five cents to make that fifteen dollars an hour on the base pay. That would be an increase of nine hundred and thirty-six. Um. Dollars for each employee, if you flip to the back page. Um, you can see with the salaries, social security, retirement and insurance. Uh, that would be an increase of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, just throwing this out there, that's for the forty-five cents on the hour. Uh, to bump it up to a thousand dollars would be an additional four thousand seven hundred and fifteen. There are sixty-two employees than this, that's in general county. Now, that does not include A Val, community corrections or nine-one-one. Employees, that's why there's only sixty-two people listed there. Um, I did speak to Jill and if we did approve this for general county, she would also be doing it for her A Val people that comes out of A Val.
If you all do it for general county, I wanna especially, I've gotten one as well, because this is actually more than I was asking for for nine-one-one, so I can break back for the last one personally, so.
And then along with that, did you see that last page there as well? I'm not sure. Last.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I was actually going to ask for thirty-six-four and fourteen ninety for Kim Ascending. Um, but the amount of stuff that Kim has taken on. P E I A insurance spreadsheet is outrageous. Uh, the different retirements, we now have hers for public employees, we have the deputy retirement, we have the nine-one retirement. Uh, the number of new employees, the, the turnover in employees, the number, she did six new employees this week with the, with the, with the chase car. Um, but we've had this turnover, um. That we say nine-one, before we can get everybody to sign up, we're already doing termination, doing the stuff and it's, there's a lot involved from payroll. And then happen to, um, do report, read reports, run the reports, um, along with those.
So. Yeah, for sure, is way underpaid for what is expected of her.
That would only bring her up to fifty-two.
Right.
And for the duties and responsibilities that she has.
And for the amount of time she's been here, that Kim is definitely underpaid for what's actually.
I would love to ask three thousand dollars for her, but I don't. I know you probably wouldn't go that far, but.
I mean, if you think about that, if Kim ever left and you tried to hire someone with even. Kind of the knowledge and experience that Kim has, you wouldn't touch that person with fifty thousand. Meanwhile, how much it costs to do a financial statement? Not that Kim does that, but that's an account scale.
But she doesn't have to spend, personally, the day that they do a check.
Right.
So overall, for everybody. Then, there's. Separate request for this.
And that's pretty much, that'll bring everybody up to what you got first to do.
That would bring the base hourly to fifteen dollars an hour.
Yes.
But that would bring everything up.
What you got listed in.
Yes. And then that's why, if you have, and I, I did up their hire dates and their years of service, you could actually, you know, see that, so many people that. How long they've been here and what they're actually making, so this is what they call them, was their June thirtieth pay. And then they did get the steps, but not everybody got a step. And then it was proposed in the rates, the nine thirty-six. So really, if they got a step, if they didn't get a step, they're only getting a hundred, but if they get a step, they got fifteen, but. Um, and then that would bring up what their pay would be with that increase. And actually, I did it, you noticed up at Kim's, she's just event, but. Hmm. Because if an employee started January first, they did not get a step, that's where we cut it off, because if we're doing our budgets, we have to cut it off some way. So with the step, if they, you know, if they're hired. December thirty-first, they get a step, if they start the next day, January first, they don't get a step. We've had to cut it off some way.
So this would be nine thirty-six plus whatever, this is just.
The steps are already done, that started July first.
Think it's for the cut down or help. Cut down on people with, with help, then they would probably cut, cut it by.
I'm, I'm hoping and I'm hoping. I'm just hoping with the way things are, I mean, I, I. Overall, morale is good. So. Um. And then you'll notice a couple people got, uh, their five or ten year mark. So you'll see a couple people got different amounts, you're like, why, why did that person get, you know, that or that, so. Like I said, I didn't, I didn't talk to Tara. Um, but with Doug going out of her budget, I would assume that she would have, and I, I left that amount. That would be an increase to her budget of five thousand six hundred and sixteen, with Doug leaving, I figure she'd have the five thousand in there. And again, I did already speak to Jill about her coming out of A Val. Because they're not included in this, in the sixty-two.
What's your thoughts, Jen?
Um, this is proposed because of the, um. Roll over.
I mean, it was kind of brought up and then, of course, like I said, with the starting salary not even at fifteen dollars an hour, it's just kind of. We hope that, you know, we're getting these employees in and hopefully as a couple years before we start losing employees, but. The idea is to kind of hopefully keep the ones we have and increasing the steps was, uh, very much appreciated, you know? For that as well.
Well, of all the things we spent money on, this is the best.
Without your employees, you can't serve your public regularly.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm willing to use to think for a minute, but I'll make the motion. Give them raise. It's not like they're overpaid.
I mean, honestly, it's less than a year that I'll be to spend on two trucks.
Right. Yes, that's it, that's what you're right.
I agree.
And that was the nine thirty-six, not the thousand, right?
That's it, what you suggest.
You know, suggest the thousand, right?
I didn't.
That's what I'll suggest.
No, we suggest three, they're forty-five cents, which go me.
So we're looking at sixteen, um.
Nine fifty-three.
Sixty-eight, nine fifty.
Yeah.
Sixty-eight, nine.
And I'll tell you, we've got some good employees and it's not like they're overpaid.
We have some wonderful employees.
Yes, we do.
I'll second.
Okay, it went about, yeah, sending.
Well. I meant to include that in.
I will, I mean, I agree with you one.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to include that in. Sorry about that. Should've went to there, sorry. But I looked at all that and.
And I did not mention this, Noah, the employees did not know that we were already discussing this, and I didn't want.
But.
We're very pleased to know.
We did talk about that when we done the budget.
Well, yeah, but I didn't throw down the.
Yes, right, but we did talk about that, we done the budget, if they'd be, if they were to carry over, we could possibly look at them.
As I said, anyone to carry over, says the motion made, I can say this. But, you know, we look, oh yeah, we've got two point seven carryover, but the one point five is already obligated. That one point, uh, one point four, we already had to meet the requirements, we had to, so that, we only had about one point two to play with, doesn't go very far.
It don't go very far at all, now, you want our reports now and then do the other later, and then do the other one then?
That's. Which is all we have left is.
There's the bills and stuff, exonerations and. That, okay. Yes, sir.
Um. Pay application number twenty-nine, I just, I realized I hadn't, it went out for signatures last week and I hadn't cut it back yet, I still don't have it back, but it does approve, so I can all see.
Yes, we need any signature.
Okay, yeah, so payout number twenty-nine, if you all can brief that, it's for. Sorry, I should have had it up. It was a small one relative, so. The other stuff we've been paying. Oh my goodness. Sorry. Construction costs.
Show's number twenty-four.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
It is for a tow. It is for a total of. Eighty-four thousand nine hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents. Eighty-four nine oh three sixty-six.
I make the motion, maybe, maybe eighty-four nine oh three sixty-six.
I second that, and I approve that also.
Like I said, it's all for signatures, I mean, request money for the first United jet, but as soon as I get signature, I'll look like.
I mean.
Friday, or tomorrow? I'm hoping to have it today, but the US, the first United signed off, and Jerry Grant has signed off, I'm waiting for USDA to sign off. I do, yes. Hot water heaters at jail, what are we, we?
I haven't moved any further with that, I just had in that time. We're waiting till next year for that, so.
Uh, financial reviews, we're on about something, actually, I don't think I have anything, we talked about that. No, I guess it was all on the agenda. Uh, the bathroom doors of the annex, I believe three of the four are working now, right?
They lock with take your problem, they open.
So the one. The one, the problem is, if you don't push the lock hard enough, it's not making contact to lock it out, but they were supposed to go up there and fix it, so the lock easily.
I guess if you have, you can jimmy it enough to.
Well, you shouldn't have to jimmy it, I asked them to go fix it, so you just lock it.
Well, you can't, like I said, it doesn't.
It still does.
I said, you just turn it, and it opens right up.
Yeah, cuz what's happening, the one just doesn't work, and we talked about building commission, they are absolutely sending someone to look at it. The other one, though, the problem is, when you put down the lock. And the occupant sign comes down, that's when there's a contact in there that tells the fog reader not to work. If you don't push it all the way through, which that one gets stuck, so it doesn't go all the way through, you can still pop. But if you push it all the way through, you can't get in, but they were supposed to, because a brand-new door, you shouldn't have to force, you should just go turn. Okay, I called about that again, cuz Vicky and I checked it the other day, as long as I force it down, works, but it's. Okay.
Then our fear too is, it, when we were pushing it all the way down. Why do you get stuck in here? Like, don't go to the bathroom without your soul.
So you've tried it like in the last couple of weeks, and it still just doesn't. They were supposed to run a dremel, make it. Oh, okay.
We'll try it again a couple times, next couple days.
Okay. Uh, that's all I got, actually.
Okay, uh, this twenty-four, there was the Lee Creek. Fire, partner carnival.
Yeah, sorry, add a request for payment for CDBG health department, and when we were under that, I had way off, doesn't matter.
What number is that?
It's for the Health Department Public Health Facility Project.
That's one I sent you.
You saw it yesterday, great. I can't remember. You probably signed a payout. Yes, that needs proof.
What's the amount?
Well, let's fill out a request, and this draw was four thousand three hundred and twenty. Nine dollars and fifteen cents. Yeah, forty-three, twenty-nine, fifteen.
The motion will pay that.
It's for the uh, health.
Health Department, yeah. Four thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Um, also, I wrote it down here and still forgot, um. That Department of Energy grant, I did get quotes on it. If, if we could. Long story short, the grant requires Davis Bacon Wages and Buy America, Build America products. So I'm going to just apply for the family court and maybe one unit here, because by the time we get. Prevailing wage and a Buy America, Build America product. Which means like eighty percent of the parts or something, or sixty percent are sourced from America. It's gonna be a much more expensive project. So then it's thirty-seven thousand dollar cap on the grant. So instead, I've almost got the, the application's ninety percent done, and so tomorrow, I'm spending it today, but everyone should all know about that.
All right, uh, July twenty-fourth, New Creek Fire Carnival there, then on the twenty-fourth, the blood drive here. On August third, uh, I was, August second, the nursing home fire, we all three were up there helping with that. And then August third was down at the Peach Festival. And um, let's see, the tenth through the twelfth, we were all at the commissioner audit training.
We're all three with the Peach Festival?
Yes, yes.
Um, I didn't know what day they, I only went to one day. Then August, oh, August, I'll sort of, August first, uh, we all were the dedication of the chase car. That morning, for that, so. We all three were there for that. Uh, August twelfth also, went to originally uh, council. They're gonna come next meeting to share some of their thoughts with us.
Yeah, you sent ten questions, it'll be your day.
Yeah, and then they called back, they're, they're coming, I should have, because they said they might show back up, so.
And then the thirteenth, I was at the mineral county day, uh, planning meeting. August thirteenth, and then met with um, the mayor, Rhonda, after that for quite a while, talking about the challenges in Leavon. And that's it.
Okay, now my, I might copy some of his statements, but I, he, I think we forgot one thing, we was at the Camp Bingo meeting.
Oh, yeah, I did forget that.
All of you then?
No, just, I want Jason, myself, I, or someone more bitter. That was thirty, wait a minute.
Thirty-first and third, first first.
And, well, it's. Uh, anyway, uh, I was at the nine-one-one center for the chase car. Uh, I attended the Peach Festival, which you were done, but I also was over at the Summer Festival, wrong me. Rick, don't think he would be. I'm just teasing you, but I was over there, nice crowd. Very, uh, pretty nice crowds, so, uh, anyway, and another thing, we, we need to. I spent a good bit of time uh, on the phone. Trying to get help over at the Peach Festival for law enforcement. And we need to, what we need to do is get with the sheriff's department, maybe get with the Apple Harvest. And the Peach Festival group, and sit down and come up with something, cuz this is just, it's crazy.
You mind if I?
No, please do.
So. Honey Dew had me doing a lot. I saw an awful lot of local law enforcement at the Peach Festival. Uh, which, which was great, a lot of roving and all the rest of that. I didn't see any bad that's happening. I did discuss with them after, meaning Peach Festival folks, that they need to consider doing some things a little different. I was talking with both uh, Joel and AJ earlier with regards to emergency response in the future. Sheriff's Office had their trailer across the street at the hardware store, which was great, there was an incident, they had something. Frank ready to either, rest of that, um, but. Medical, they didn't have covered, so, already started a conversation. Peach Festival folks introduced it to AJ, getting AJ's trailer there, maybe having. The, somebody from EMS, like uh, the, the chase car there, or something like that. Um, with that many people there. You know, statistically, something's gotta happen. From a matter, matter of fact, it was a minute.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I, I think it may not be a bad idea for some organization, doesn't have to be the commission. Uh, whether it's. I, I don't know, uh, CBD or whoever, to ask those folks that do these major events to get together and. Talk about some of the things. As, as you mentioned, there's lots of these things going on, and. Well, be it for us, if we hadn't thought about it in pants, that when you have literally thousands of people there. Statistically, something, especially a medical perspective, is going to have, happen at some point. It's just a matter of time.
It is. So, okay, thank you for your input.
Now, the third and fourth also is up at station two, helping clean up for the.
And, okay, where was I? Calls for deputies at Peach Festival, you got that. And also, I was kind of shocked at evening of the second. When the incident took place at the fire department. I mean, at the uh, nursing home, uh, I was just getting ready to turn up in there, and I got distracted. My phone rang, and I didn't recognize the number, it was in my pocket, and by the time I got it out, it was, went off. Cuz I was driving and seatbelt and stuff. And I didn't recognize the number, ten seconds later, it rang again, and. I think, uh, I know the minister's up there, I talked to you a little bit about it, but I thought it was. And I wanna shout out a big thank you to our governor, it was him. Called me about what's going on, what can the state do, what can they do to help us up there? So what I did, I got with some of the. Law enforcement up there, and I, cuz I've just arrived, I, I didn't know too much about what was going on yet, cuz I'd just left the wedding. But anyway, they uh. I've done, I followed up with him, getting information back to him and his field rep, Pam, so everything is. You know, I didn't care if good, but I thought it was really great. I don't know how he found out so fast. I shared that with you, did you, uh, there's up there, I don't know how the governor found out that fast, but he was, he, I thought that was.
That's impressive.
That is very impressive, I think we got a good governor, with my opinion. And I wanna thank him, yeah, and I wanna thank him for that. But anyway, uh, to move on, on a little bit. I had a region eight signing, I was at Kanane Valley from Sunday evening till Tuesday midday. And also, uh, I don't, I'm gonna say this, I don't always report this, but. And I'm gonna make an announcement on this, uh, you know Solid Waste, if you don't know. Uh, right now, they have set up arrangement at both of their transfer stations to take in tires. Free of charge. Uh, there used to be just a couple times a year, maybe in the county, if we was lucky, different counties, but over the last couple of years. Uh, I have probably disposed, and I took a load up to. Transfer station the other day, I have probably helped dispose at least two hundred tires. I've been, and they're not mine, they're not tires I had. It's just, I get them from people, I got a request the other day, the guy said, would you pick up my tires to for them? I said, yeah, next time I go, so. But I think they're free, you can take them up there unloaded, you can take up, they, they like for you to take no more than ten, but if you got. Eleven or twelve, they probably wouldn't say nothing. But uh, I think that's a good thing, and Solid Waste is still on, I have to commend them on that, and that come through the legislators, by the way. They're the ones that made this possible, you know about that.
I've been whining about tires over the hillside.
Yep, well. I've got, I was located, I located one I was gonna clean up, but when I went back and looked at it, it was already cleaned up. I don't know who got it.
There is a limit on that, it's not for business, this is personal use, so.
It's for personal use, it's not for business, uh, yes, thank you for, but I, I found another dump. It don't have a lot of tires in it, but it's probably got two pickup loads, but one of the things that I always liked about. Tractors trucks that come in when they had, like, Saturday pickup, I'm just using that for example. I got to know the people there that was running that, and the guy said, where'd you get all these tons? And I told him, what I done, where was that, and he said, you bring all you want. I'm sorry, that was nice of him, and I took, I'd take in twenty a load. Uh, easy, but uh, and then I, one gentleman contacted me about, he had literally. Probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred tires on his place. And they actually came there to their, his place, picked them up. So I've been working through them, so I'm trying to get our state cleaned up, or our county cleaned up with tires, so it's good. Yeah, that's, it's quite a job, that's a job. But all they want out of you is your operators when you go to transfer stations. You know, the guy listens to your operators and asks you how many you got, and. And then they got a trailer sitting there, you can just throw them in.
Do they require that to be covered load or not?
Yes, I would, I would say anything goes to transfer station needs to be covered. Yeah, let me say this, if you got tractor tires, come off of, back to of a farm tractor, you gotta cut them in force. They will not handle the one tire, they're too heavy for, so that you gotta cut them in four pieces. You better get a, get a grinder or sawzall or something out. So anyway. Uh, that's all I have.
All right. Last commission meeting. Monday the twenty-eighth, the, it was National Prayer One meeting. Also went to the Frank PSD meeting. The, yes, Frankfurt, it is Frankfurt. Uh, the thirtieth, I was on a Zoom call about Carperdale Sewer. Friday the first, I had a fountain PSD meeting. Was also a bit of a chase car thing. Uh, got a phone call from Cumberland Newspaper, did an interview. That was on the transmission lines. Uh, of course, Saturday was up at the nursing home, Saturday evening, Sunday, Monday. I had, I had a call about the. It was Monday, what, yeah, it was Monday after I had the chase car, no, the fire, the fire. The fired nursing home, that was, that was on WB News, that was a live, I thought they just wanted to ask some questions, here was a live interview. On the radio. Interesting.
Question, you said, I was wrong.
Yeah, West Red, yeah, West Virginia Metro. Um, did that. And I also got another call from Cumberland Paper about the chase car, well, so. That was two different things. I was all over the news this week, last week. I had enough of that, so I'm done. Do you see, I was up at Deltona. Instruction progress meeting on the seventh. I was owns by Zoom. Then we was at Kanane for the training, state order training. Last night, I was on a Zoom call with the governor, but it was just a, didn't interact with him. He was just doing a. Uh, like a update of certain things that was going on, he took some questions and answers, answered some questions people had. It was about an hour long call, did you wanna add it?
Did not add other, it's to be, it's from the meeting elsewhere.
Uh, just, just listened to that, um, with the governor, I guess all that I have.
And also, I hated to mirror from Piedmont left, but uh. They got funding and approval, they're gonna be drilling a second well, you know about that? And their tank, their water storage tank, they got approval for that. And it's gonna be, probably be spring before they start on that, so that's good news for Piedmont. So I'm glad to hear that. I'm done, yeah.
Can I just come down to your office up a bit, do a good bill, so, this one? I got L E B C meeting. I haven't been to one in a while.
One thinking bills. This is. Except one, so I can see what fate. Um, this was converting from the uh. First, the ers, which is the public employees to the EMS retirement for Luke and I need. And um they had to refigure for the correction, so it's actually.
Which one under, under Luke's?
So the total amount would be that ten thousand two oh six oh nine. Um out of that, uh the top is. The first line there, the E E C O N, that would be the employee, that's Luke's portion. The E R C O N is the county. The E E I N T would be Luke, the E R I N T would be the county. So the five thousand three hundred and eighty-five, eighty-six, excuse me. Would be the county's portion of that.
Five thousand two hundred and eighty-four.
Well, this sense I was adding up.
Oh, okay, eighty-five, okay, five, two eighty-four. Eighty-five, yeah, okay, I got it. This is what the county would have, I'm confused.
This is to move it over into ers. This is the buyback. This is the buyback.
For just the last couple of months?
It's all attached, there's nine pages ahead of that. So if you look at it, those weren't the figures you were getting.
That's December fifteenth.
No, Kim told me it was like fourteen hundred. Yeah, right here, employee contributions due fourteen hundred. Employer is two seventy-eight.
That's what I thought too, and she's like, no, here it is. And I was like, oh, that's a big difference.
But it couldn't be because the EMS RS and employer contribution is only, is this, is nine and a half percent. And you guys already contributed nine. Fifty-two hundred dollars is way more than half a percent. Would that be if I wanted to buy back for all of my years of service? Would they have sent you that? Cause that's probably what that would be. Cause when you transfer in EMS RS, if I wanted to buy my last nine years, the EMS service rather than. Her service.
They gave us an eight thousand dollar credit. Credit off of, maybe that's what it is. She's not figuring out the credit and the debit there.
Yeah, the third, cause, cause you already paid in the per's for me. So that would transfer from hers to EMS RS.
Yeah, she just gave this to me yesterday and I was just kind of.
Yes, you guys only owe two seventy-eight.
That's when I said, uh, I said, wow.
Two hundreds. No, ten thousand, the, I don't know where.
It was currently five thousand.
Well, that's just for me. Yeah, the.
She's the next one.
County would have been forty-seven.
So I think it is one thirty-four one.
If you take the credit off, it is at thirteen, one thirteen ninety, thirteen ninety seventy-nine for you. An employer would be two seventy, okay, it's just, it's a credit, you're not paying it off.
Yeah, is the per's contribution transfers there that you made?
And then I lean was six seventy-one thirty-six.
If you go into your third page, yes, and I was like, I I looked at that third page and she'll say, no, that's not the invoice. There's the invoice. When you take the credit off. Then it's only the two seventy-eight ninety.
Yeah, um. For my share, would it be okay if they just took two hundred dollars to check out? I mean, something, let them do fourteen hundred, but I'd rather just out of my excellent.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that as well.
Same way with Ali, you should do it a little bit.
Yeah, cause I leave at six seventy-one.
Six seventy-one. Yeah, I mean, I would be, I don't wanna cut her completely out on the chart, that didn't be.
Yeah, we can outcheck.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you just gave me a bit of parenting.
Now, if you keep these, this is personal information, so I ask you to keep it safe. If you don't need it, we'll take it back to trade.
I think my social.
That's what I'm saying this. I didn't put it in their permission packet.
I don't need this. I I prefer you shred.
Shred, yes. That's what, um, I understand is personnel, I mean. If you do keep that, make sure you keep it safe and that personal information. If you don't need it, we'll shred it.
Thank you. All right, now what's next?
Well, we got exoneration and bills, but that's.
Yeah, here's the exoneration.
What you doing, those you do when you go down there, Dutch?
Uh, yeah. Oh, well, yeah, we get them, Joe, and we're gonna do bills. So the commission personnel, is that being held there for the next meeting again?
Yes. We'll need to push it back.
All right. Right. All the, there's all these twenty-five's. I've been talking to a lot of the other commissioners, they, unless it's their mistake in courthouse. They have, they're not.
They're not going back any.
They're not going back then, that's what, if it's our mistake, yes, we have to. That's only fair.
The only other thing too is watch it, is it doof like a bill?
If it's a doof, well, that'd be our fault.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree a hundred percent there. That's what I'm looking to. I think we are, so far, we're all going to last. Not even looking at the mouth.
I have been in one for a month. Oh, yeah. All right, I'll go slow down.
Yeah, you have to side of it.
Do I hear a motion to.
Um, they're all legit. Is that, oh, exoneration there? Um, I, I honestly don't uh. Um believing, but.
Yeah.
Like, we'll see, hey. I'll send you the Riley Keaton's uh contact.
Where'd you?
He is uh one of Riley Moore's chapters.
Yeah, I'd like, I have a walkover to.
Of course, and I probably go to the mayor. I did, and I'd like to have the information.
I did talk to mayor, I forgot that, that's my thing, mayor, tell me about Kaiser.
Yeah, I'm gonna give Burlington, I'm gonna give the fire department in Burlington. I'm gonna get with the fire department at New Crete. And I'm gonna get with the mayor of. And do my districts, and I'll talk to them about if they know any outstanding individual. It's a challenging decision, especially when you do something on that level of recognizing, it's gonna be there. Okay, perpetually.
When they mentioned that, I said, no, you're opening something that doesn't need to be opening. You're only gonna tick people off, and you're gonna name it after somebody else. It's only gonna cost the taxpayer money, and now we're gonna put us on, call somebody. Then you're gonna make people mad. I said, just let it go.
Well, it's one of those things where there's not very many post offices and then. Find a person in Kaiser, I mean, there's, well, doesn't need to immediately come along, and what's gonna happen next year or whatever?
The mayor immediately said Jeff Rollins.
Yeah, that's the first name.
Yeah, but who was it?
Rollins.
Jeff Rollins.
But, but I'm sure there are other folks, and if you were a hundred years ago, there'd be other names, not Rollins. Yeah.
When you get everybody involved, all this is gonna do is the people.
I'll there too, but.
When Rhett said that, and I gave him an earful, and I said, now you take that back. When Rhett says something to me about it.
But I'm gonna share with, now, if they don't have. Uh like a mayor, like.
We need to open it up to the public if you're gonna.
I'm gonna open to the fire department, so let them get it out. I'm not beyond the first. I'm gonna go to the fire departments and have them to put it out there.
Yeah, I, I think that's kinda like running around the thunderstorm of a, I agree, metal rock.
Yeah.
The ma- Damon yesterday, I'm like, man, I don't even know where to begin. Somebody's gonna be unhappy.
When, when we talked about ending the courthouse annex, we didn't even have a big discussion about that, and that was already a.
Yes, yeah.
That's what I also mentioned to Aline, it's not the judicial annex, because originally, yeah. I said, when it was gonna be the courts, it was gonna be the judicial annex, but it's not the judicial.
Well, I'll, I'll send you Riley Keaton's contact information. Or I'll tell you what, I'll send Riley a note and copy you. That way Riley has the connection. I know Riley.
If you, if you would.
Can I do what?
Did you get it for me before six o'clock scene?
Yeah, today, yeah.
Yeah, cause I'm going to Nelk Garden tonight, that same man. Well, I could always go talk.
Don't you have Rhett doing some various contact information?
I probably do something.
Yeah.
That's how many cards I got.
Well, Rhett or Riley?
Rhett, Rhett or Riley. Yeah, I got Rhett's. I know I got a part of his.
Well, use Rex if you want.
I'll use Rex. I'll walk it home when I get my money. Should have time.
Well, give me a shout if you need.
If I need it, I'll call.
All right.
Thank you.
What's happening up in Nelk Garden tonight?
Uh, they got firefighters named story. But I doubt if Mayor Bob's there, but I was gonna try to get a hold of him. You know.
I've got open houses. It, 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 this, this is not related to elected offices scouting. So I tried to do open houses for the schools, so you complete pep scouts. All three of them. Are on the same day at the same time, but I mean, it's like. Why can't they bounce those around?
So how many people ended up sharing at the Peach Festival?
I don't know how you get it accurate.
I don't.
Barbie's using number fifteen thousand.
There was a few people there, but.
Well, there was a lot. In fact, I heard the parking, the parking was full, absolutely full is what I was told. There was no parking. I did, I also called the sheriff. They said, now, next year, they have like road ties, road tie. I talked to Lee Thorne, I talked to Joel, um.
Yeah, I did too.
I, I think if they planned it further in advance, I told them, try six months in advance to get on somebody's calendar. Somebody made a suggestion, well, co- contact a local contractor, like.
Well, that, for what did they want?
Temporary signs, those electronic signs.
Oh, we have, we have two, we have two, that's all.
Did you have to get a permit to put them out?
Ah, okay.
Who, who controls them when you say we?
Sheriff's, sheriff's office, they act too.
So Joel was trying to get JJ to look to check into that, and it just was too short notice.
Yeah, no, you have, it's like a two or three month lead.
Yeah, well, and part, I've tried to stay out of that as much as possible. It's unavoidable when it's honeydew. But um.
Yeah, so um, those sound guys weren't very nice, I'll tell you that much.
Which ones?
The sound guy?
Yes, they are extreme, and, and you're, you're, you, you, you were too kind. You should have. Cause as I told Barbie, I guess you're still being recorded, so I'll clean it up. The fact that that sound person. Was just way out over his skis. My, my, my response would have been, I thought you're the employee.
Yeah.
You're, you're a contractor. You're getting paid to do what we want you to do.
Right.
Not to tell us what we're supposed to do. And, and I've had a lot of, and I know the Peach Festival people are very unhappy about it, they um. Well, they had a lot of people who are very unhappy that you were unable to do the service.
Yeah, well, they, they uh. I, you just don't know who's recording, and I thought, I'm not gonna make a big deal out of this, and with something we can talk about behind the scenes later. Yeah, so that's what I was thinking.
It, but it's, it's very much on the Peach Festival folks' mind. I, I mean, I had a lot of conversations in the car. Not that I initiated it, but I mean, uh and then I, I went to their meeting Monday night, they were doing their. Postmortem, you know, things that needed, and this was clearly a topic of discussion, along with a few other related aspects to. Uh the sound guy.
The sound, you didn't even get to preach.
No, we showed up at nine for sound check, and they didn't show up until eleven.
Jason said it was a nightmare when talking to that guy.
Oh, yeah, it, it, the name of the sound company, one angry sound guy, right? Isn't that the name of the sound?
I don't know the name. What was the name of? Oh, yes, right, guess what you told me, yeah, yeah.
Well.
But it was, I just didn't think now that was the time and the place to, to address the issue right there, so.
Understandable, you don't wanna make a public scene and all.
Um.
And you were there to preach, so like.
Well, Joel was going to do worship for an hour.
I know.
So we were.
Yeah, this um, this is very much a concern of the folks of the day.
Um, I, I wasn't offended by him or anything, I just felt bad for, for Barbie.
Well, there were, there were a number of people that the Peach Festival has heard of that were unhappy, cause they specifically wanted to hear that.
Yeah, we had, I had some people show up. We stayed, stuck around until eleven o'clock, and then I got the call, can you go over to Station Two? Yeah, that's right, when I left. When I went back to him and said, hey, can I just make an announcement? Barbie asked me to make an announcement about the nursing home, and just pray, just pray to start the day. He was getting ready to start sound checks.
Well, I didn't hear about the nursing home myself until Sunday morning, I guess.
Oh, yeah. He said, that's not what I have. I said. Yeah, yeah, I said, well, she's asking, you're getting ready to turn your sound on. I just quickly make an announcement, I just need a mic or whatever. And pray for the, for, for the day of the Peach Festival, he said, not what happened. I said, okay, thank you. And then I got a phone call.
Bounce it off. This is somebody you contracted to perform a service.
Yeah.
Wow, you're done. Get yourself on Monday.
And I thought that was really neat, the governor calling that fast. I don't know how he found out, but I have no clue how he found out.
That, that, that was.
Three different times out of you.
That's good, son. I told somebody the other day, there's so much going on in town. I sneezed the other day, and somebody called, Port Ashby called me and said, God bless you.
Our, I don't, Governor Morsy does legitimately give us more attention than some other counties. Our regional liaison said he doesn't know. Any other counties that.
No.
Right, right.
Well, and that was happening, skin pain too.
Well, even when he was a prosecutor, you know, the attorney general, he was always told by. He likes mineral. And he's willing to help, and that proved. We could, on Saturday night, when he called me, I don't know when the first call come in, but it was.
Yeah. I was, it's nice when the sun shines on.
I'm telling you.
All right, well, hey, you guys, appreciate what you're doing, all of your coming. Thank you. You gotta use your facilities and uh spend some money in Monroe County.
Uh I moved, we approved the exoneration, I second that, and I also moved that we approved the bill.
I second that.
Purchase orders? With the fresh.
All these.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve your states.
I second that.
Okay, we'll get to these here in a little bit. Oh, and I'm moving as we were, first to be able to see.
I um, I second that.
Okay.
So you a adjourned?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.